Okay, very good. The Chair calls to order a special meeting, or the regular meeting, right? Regular meeting of the Board of Education, July 21st at 6:00 PM. Roll call, please.
Mr. Armstrong?
Here.
Mrs. Coyle?
Here.
Mr. Strohmeyer?
Mr. Price?
Here.
If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is public comment, and I think we have a couple.
We do. So, these are, I'm reading these in the order of the seat, so. Let me help, I need to remove my mask to be heard. First public comment is Heather Booth and Paul Zaromba. And they write, hello, this message is intended as public comment for the July 21st meeting of the CUSD Board of Education. Our names are Heather Booth and Paul Zaromba, and we have two children in the district. We are writing in support of the educators and staff of CUSD 201. As the board administration moves to consider plans for in-person learning, we feel it's essential that faculty and staff have a working environment that is safe as possible in these difficult circumstances. Thus, this includes providing all employees with PPE appropriate to their role that will protect themselves and our students from COVID transmission, providing all classroom teachers with the necessary supplies to keep their personal workspace clean, providing general janitorial staff with the appropriate time, personnel, and supplies to effectively clean our buildings. If the district is unable to acquire or provide these basic safety supplies, the district is not prepared for the return to in-person learning. Additionally, we feel it is essential to provide for paid days for all CUSD staff who need to self-quarantine or self-isolate because of COVID exposure or contact tracing procedures, regardless of their current status. Requiring staff to take unpaid time, especially for those who potentially work remotely, disincentivizes this essential step in keeping our schools, children, families, and community healthy. We understand and appreciate the essential role that opening school buildings provide in protecting the educational, physical, and emotional health of our students and the economic health of our community. However, two unpaid weeks for each potential exposure would take a significant toll on staff who could not be asked to choose between supporting their families and supporting the health of our community. Respectfully, Heather Booth and Paul Zaromba. The next comment is from Dana Hayjack. Below is my intended public comment for the July 21st School Board meeting. I wanted to start by saying I truly appreciate the endless hours of work that has been put in by staff and admin alike, develop plans to return to classes in August. What I want to talk about today is the great concern I have as a parent for the care and treatment of our staff. I am concerned about the health, financial, and professional safety of our staff. This is particularly important when it comes to hourly staff or those non-salary. I am advocating for the following for our staff. All appropriate PPE for staff needs to be secured and paid for by the district before school starts. We need to have sufficient amounts of PPE and a sufficient amount of money to replace PPE as we go. A written explanation as to what the PPE is, needs to be available to families as well. Our janitorial staff needs to be supplied adequate time, workforce, and supplies to properly do their job. If we can't commit to this, it's my opinion we shouldn't even be considering opening our doors. Two, all staff should be paid, not forced to use personal time off sick days if, when they are forced into a quarantine situation, whether that be because they had exposure to have symptoms or positive COVID tests. We are asking a lot of all of our staff. The least we can do is take care of them in this way. Will any staff be offered hazard pay as some other essential workers have? If we are offering the option for families to remote learn or return to in-person school, will a staff member who has concerns over returning in-person, in-person school be allowed to opt for the remote learning model as well? How will, how will we be honoring these concerns? All staff can be, need to be working with an agreed-upon contract before they ask to enter the building. This is an expectation I have in normal circumstances, and as you all know, we are living in anything but normal circumstances. And lastly, we cannot ask support staff, TA, student services, resource teachers, special teachers, to solve all of our staffing logistics. If we need to hire more staff, as my math and knowledge suggests we should, we would, and we have a number of students returning to in-person instruction, the parent surveys suggest, we need to be able to make that financial commitment. Can the district do that? Can we make these logistical moves of using staff that have always had other responsibilities and continue to serve the students and this, this staff supported in the past equitably? I specifically think of two vulnerable populations when I say this: ELL and special education. The numbers aren't adding up to me, and I'm hoping we aren't planning to ask staff to perform a laundry list of duties to avoid the financial commitment hiring more staff would require. Again, I appreciate the exhaustive work being done by so many at this time. Respectfully, Dana Hayjack. Next is Angie Kumane. Hello, Mr. Carey, hope you are well. I understand that we don't know until tomorrow the plans for the fall. I have some concerns. With all the focus on school opening, I'm feeling the needs of the children that receive services are being left out. How will the children receive their service if we do, should do five days? What about if we do half-days or the AB schedule? I hope everyone can vote on the best possible solution. I'd hate for my mind to fall behind. If we should go into an AB schedule, I really need to have all siblings in 201 on the same schedule. Thank you for all your hard work. This is Angela Kumane. Next is Rev, Christina Rev. To whom I may concern, I have a high school junior at Westmont High School. I understand the frustration of all parents and children alike. I share in that frustration and would love for our children to be able to return to school. I would like to advocate for a hybrid solution that brings back to school our kids ages 10 and under in a more spread-out school environment to reduce the number of students per class, and to advocate for the older students have mostly online instruction with some details below. Here's why. There's a mixture of studies and results on whether children can contract or spread COVID-19. Some studies have shown that children under 10 very rarely contract the virus. There's also some evidence to show that they may not spread the virus for too much more minimal extent than older children. There have been several studies that show this data at this point, and I've not seen any studies that contradicted these results. Therefore, the Westmont School District elects to go back at all. I think it should be for this age group. That schools should resume, as this is the age group with the lowest level of risk of contraction and transmission. In addition to lowered risk of contagion and contraction from this age group, this is also the age group that has the most difficult time with remote learning and online instruction. Therefore, from a pure learning standpoint, it follows that this age group has the greatest need for in-person instruction. Finally, this is the age group that allows parents to go back to work. This is the age group that has parents panicking the most about how they will work, be able to work, if their children are at home needing their help. Studies of older children, such as high schoolers, have been a lot less positive in outlook regarding COVID transmission and contraction. In fact, some recent studies have shown that the 18 to 28-year-old population has had the biggest increase in the COVID-19 cases in the U.S. recently. 18-year-olds are still in high school. I'm against opening a high school fully for this reason. The high school population is also more capable to do online learning than younger children. My opinion, the high school should only be open to a limited capacity. Students should have more intensive online schooling, but be able to seek out in-person instructions in limited cases, such as labs or assistance where online learning is not effective, which, which would vary depending on the subject and the teacher. Last spring's online learning was not effective. I know teachers tried, but they didn't have the time to prepare for online learning. At the end of school year, CUSD 21 stated that summer months will be utilized the plan for the 2020, 2021 school year. Part of the planning, part of the planning should have been online learning planning and working with teachers on how to be more effectively, or be more effective through online learning. This is not part of the preparation of this summer. That is the shortcoming of CUSD 201 leadership. I know lots of parents are worried that their children will fall behind in school, and I understand and share this concern. However, I would rather my child not pass an AP test and spread the virus to even a single teacher with an underlying condition that leaves that teacher with reduced lung capacity for the rest of his, the rest of her life or worse. Colleges and universities will deal with the fact that there are differences among this one year in terms of the level of instruction received. They'll cope with those differences, and this one year in school will not harm our children in the long run. There are vaccine trials in the U.S. and UK that are already showing success. This is, this will not last more than a year. The middle school is a crapshoot, in my opinion, in terms of opening. Frankly, there's very little in the way of data on this age group. Either decision to open or not is reasonable. In terms of sports, I firmly believe that only outdoor sports should resume. Studies show quite clearly that the transmission of the virus outdoors is quite minimal compared with indoor transmission. Regardless of what CUSD 21 decides and whether any of my thoughts are taken into account, I want to emphasize, we not only have children in our schools if everyone turns, returns, but also teachers, administrators, and other staff. If a decision is made to return to school, what measures will we take to make sure these teachers, administrators, and others are treated fairly in the middle of this pandemic? If teachers have certain risk factors for COVID-19, do they still have to come back to work? If they choose not to, they're not, then they are not eligible for unemployment benefits? And what if they live with someone with significant risk factors, but the teacher has no such factors? Do they have to return to work? Are they eligible for unemployment benefits? Will the school offer regular testing to teachers, administrators, students at no cost? If a teacher was exposed to someone with COVID or has questionable symptoms, are they required to be out of school until the test results come back? Or are they out upon confirmation of COVID? There is a COVID case, does the school notify everyone? How? Will the, will the name of the person that has COVID, in order to make sure that everyone can't take with the person that's tested, or will names not be used because of the HIPAA concern? However, a lot of people refer to European schools being open, arguing that if European schools can open, so can we. I would however, like to highlight some differences in the way that Europe has opened its schools, and also the resources available to people in Europe that do not contract the virus. Europe's COVID numbers stabilized before they opened schools in any capacity at all. Our numbers in the U.S. are surging. Though Illinois is doing better in some states, recent numbers in Illinois have shown increases also. In addition, travel within the U.S. has not been restricted, and many have traveled or roll traveled during the summer months, and that travel can lead to further surges. Most European countries have not fully opened schools. Those that have opened for the tail end of the school year with a mixture of online and in-person learning, and only for a short period. After the short periods, schools went on summer break or are on break right now. Sweden and Iceland are the only two European countries that have not closed schools at all, and frankly, those countries don't have that much in the way of migration or tourism where they have people bringing the virus in. They were able to get a hold on the spreading of the virus by the sound of, by the simple fact that the global travel declined due to the pandemic, so they never had a lot of cases to begin with. Daycare centers in Europe did open, but again, lots of precautions, providing students into one week on, one week off daycare arrangements, and deep cleaning the centers in between. Many European countries are currently still debating whether schools should be open in the fall at all. There are no issues in Europe about who pays for COVID testing and for care if someone gets sick because everyone has healthcare. If teachers have underlying conditions or lives with someone that does, they're not forced back to work and collect unemployment. I hope these comments are read and considered for CUSD 21 decision-making process. Next is Karen Mulford. Question about plans for, for 2020, 21. What is the plan for when a student, teacher, or staff member of one school is tested positive for COVID-19? Will there be a whole class or whole building quarantine? Will there be testing available for students, teachers, and staff in the case of a local positive case? What is the plan for transitioning between in-person and remote learning for when there are positive cases in the building? Thanks, Karen Mulford. Two kids in elementary. Next is Angela Steciti. We appreciate all the planning that has gone into returning this children, staff back to school, but without knowing protocols, it feels like all of this is for nothing. It would be very careful, very helpful knowing how the following would be handled. If a student or staff has a fever, will they be required to take a COVID test before returning to school? What will quarantine look like if anyone tests positive? How will chain work, how will the chain work if quarantined? Would siblings in a classroom have to be quarantined? Would collaborators, what specific teachers have to quarantine? And what percentage of classes would take place, what percentage of cases would take place for the school to close down? Thank you for your time, Anne Steciti. Next is Patrice Melamus. Dear Dr. Carey and School Board, thank you for taking the time to figure out the best needs of our staff and children at South District 201, at School District 21. I have some concerns and thoughts about the 2020, 2021 school year to share with you. Although the option of being full-time in person worries me due to exposing my children to COVID, I believe you will carefully assess that what needs to be done to keep our children safe. I think it's logistically the best idea to go to school in-person five days, even if we move to grade-level centers. It's important that our kiddos get the best possible education with whatever decision you all make. I have a couple of concerns of the possibility of having an AB schedule. I feel the AB schedule is best for our children and staff. I hope that family, that family unit in District 201 is kept in mind. Students of the same family must be in and out of school on the same day. In addition to that, you will have families who will be helping each other out and will need to be attending school the same days. I hope there will be exceptions for special circumstances for families that will be working together for childcare for this unprecedented school year. The option of an AB schedule will also be challenging for students. How will students' special needs with IEPs or 504s have their needs met, meeting only two days a week? On the flip side, how will above-average learners be challenged only meeting in school two days a week? Good luck with your decisions. I hope you keep the needs of the whole child in mind and the entire family in mind when you plan for the 2020, 2021 school year at District 201. Kindness regards, Patrice Melamus. And this is from Amanda Hadeki. Hello. First, thank you for your time and efforts with this all. I appreciate it. No, it is not easy at all. I may mailing this now as I may not be able to do so later. My child will be in second grade at Manning. Always has been there. Is it possible to give parents the option, is it possible to give parents the option to do 100% in-person, since those who are against in-person are given the option for 100% remote learning via the virtual academy? The same would go for teacher-staff who are willing to teach in-person versus those who are not. I feel those who are willing to be complete in-person, families, teachers, staff should be given the option to do so and vice versa. Hybrid learning can be difficult for elementary teacher who need childcare after school. I'm not saying this in regards to the actual care of the child, but exposure, which is a worry of most parents. Instead of keeping the same kids together five days a week, you're allowing more exposure points to other people, families, children during those remote learning times. If the days are half-days and childcare is needed. Just something to consider with the hybrid learning. At least with five full days, we can control who the children are around the majority of the day and decrease the burden of childcare to working parents. Lastly, will a survey be conducted with a clear-cut question of our preference, remote, hybrid, or virtual? We are never asked that straightaway. Maybe give a better idea of what the possibilities are for the year. Thank you so much. Next is Judy Clifford, and she's got two comments. The first one is, a grandparent with stage IV cancer is sharing a home with my 10 and 12-year-old grandsons. I'm concerned about child, children returning to school. We know that children aged 10 and older are carriers and transmitters of COVID. How can you protect the students and their families from this virus in a school setting? What steps has the school taken with clean air systems, limiting exposure to others, students, and teachers, bus riding? There has to be more than wearing masks. Then her second comment from Judy Clifford, as a former teacher, I have to say that the e-learning provided for them at the middle school is inadequate and poorly done. I live with my grandsons, one of whom is a student at the junior high. The other boy attends private school. The private school teachers did an excellent job of completing the school year without the kids missing any learning. Teachers met daily with Zoom classes where classmates could discuss together, and the teachers taught lessons daily. Class time was every morning from 8:30 to 11:30 with some extra classes meeting in the afternoon. Assignments were given the four main subjects for students to complete in the afternoon. It was excellent. For the most part, seemed like most of the grand, my grandson's teachers in the sixth grade took the rest of the school year off as vacation, occasionally printing an assignment for students to do, but no teaching and no feedback. You must do a better job this year if e-learning is being done. And the next, most of the public comments have been about opening the school year. This one is about board governance. It's from Dan Charleston. As a former board member who served alongside the current senior board members, it is disappointing to see so much bickering over matters like office transition and leadership and call you on that day. Joe Price was correct to note that the board is made of seven equal members. While leadership matters, the real issue is the ability of board members to work together in dealing with substantive problems of governing school district on behalf of taxpayer-paying community. As a matter of historical perspective, when Mr. Price and Mrs. Charleston were elected to, in the 2000, in 2009, they were part of four candidate slate, then seated four incumbent board members, and there was no officer transition of any kind. Nor did Mrs. Charleston or Mr. Price or the other elected board members from the 2009 election make any effort to ask for transition assistance, because new board members had a very different vision of direction for the future of the district. But Judy Wilson and Gary Armstrong were active supporters of that effort, and the successful force them in that election had ultimately wholeheartedly supported the path those board members took in governing the board from that point forward. In fact, you all know that the first year of the board, from 2009 until the departure of then superintendent, 2010, was exceptionally, exceptionally rancorous and difficult, both in open session and closed. But you won't survive to move forward. The need to, the reason to note that context is simply this: While a transition plan is a great idea, perhaps even an ISB best practice, it is my view a matter of personality and title rather than a matter of substance. But now, as Mrs. Wilson steps down for the board with three vacancies to fill, I would encourage the board and community to focus on matters of substance rather than personality or hurt feelings about who holds titles and who doesn't. There is too much at stake to continue arguing about who did wrong to whom. So what are the matters of substance? Miss Strohmeyer touched on them very succinctly. They are the lack of strategic plan, an ongoing structural deficit, as well as an understanding of how to get to the point in otherwise excellent economic conditions for several years prior to COVID-19-related matters. The lack of employee contracts, there are three union contracts plus administrative contracts to address that need to be negotiated, and the lack of seasoned board members to take on the task. The outcome is that it leads the district administration to engage in difficult negotiations that really should be the purview of the board members, especially in light of the district's current financial condition. The energy that transitioning planning and community coffee conversations are taking away from the planning for classrooms and virus and academic related matters next fall and beyond, and how those issues should affect contract negotiation and future work and compensate related matters. Of the above tasks, the single most important immediate task facing the board is the negotiation of WTA contract. I point out that CUSD 21 has historically been the highest-paying unit district in the state of Illinois for its teaching staff, both by nominal dollar and salary schedule. I strongly encourage new board members to go to Naperville, CUSD 203, and 204 websites and pull down teacher salary schedules, or any other unit district in the area. Print them, put them side-by-side with 201's salary schedule. 201's schedules are substantially more generous. That is a sword that cuts two ways. The ability to hire and attract excellent teachers is wonderful, but growth of those salaries is going to have to be curtailed to address the current deficit. Existing contracts also has insurance, retirement, evaluation, and other workday-related issues that should be addressed and negotiated as well. Placing the administration in the role of having to negotiate those things on behalf of the board and community is troubling for them and should be troubling for the community. The other staff-related issues that the board still need to address itself too, and these are issues that come into play on a regular basis, is administrative contracts for the superintendent, business manager, and building leadership. In addition, the board has been largely abstinent in conversations about community development in the downtown TIF and proposals for current development, even though it has a significant economic and operational stake in proposed downtown development. These are very big and substantive issues the board must address. As to transparency, I'll appoint the committee, community, to the fact that the Freedom of Information Act, FOIA, allows community members to request copies of electronic communications by and between board members and certain staff, as well as underlying documents, notes, and contracts. There are, of course, limits in terms of volume of requests and documents, but important communication is available for asking via FOIA. All that is required is an email request to the district FOIA officer, I believe him 201, it's still the business manager, requesting these emails or documents for certain periods or in conjunction with certain topics. Warning, as a board member, when you're on receiving an FOIA request for your emails or texts, it feels intrusive, terribly so, but the law provides for it for good reason. Board members are first and foremost public servants. The other thing I suggest community members get up to speed on is the Open Meetings Act for Illinois. It'll help you understand when board members can discuss matters away from the board table, but how many can do so, and that can be, and what can be addressed in closed session? What kinds of emails are allowed? How many board members can be on an email and other matters? But in the end, CUSD 21 is a brilliant community dedicated to their children's, children's education and wellbeing. It's a fantastic district to work in for staff for both economic and cultural reasons. Remember, Jack Baldeman was named High School Principal of the Year in 2018, the Illinois and the nation, and that he was brought to the district by his longtime friend and colleague, Kevin Carey. And Kevin Carey has done an outstanding job of hiring staff and creating a culture of collaboration and excellence. This is not to suggest that anyone, teachers or staff or administration, Kevin or Jack included, or board members, won't, haven't probably made mistakes, sometimes painful ones, but at their core, they are deeply committed, talented, and extremely principled. CUSD 201 has, also has one of the most vibrant and diverse tax bases of any community in Illinois or nation, and that community is enjoying a real resurgence in new construction, which creates new revenue for the districts that's not subject to its tax cap. 85% of its revenues are local, but it matters when the state is late with a few hundred thousand dollars in payments when you're already deficit spending. So there's work and planning to be done and care to be taken and contracts to negotiate. I offer my heartfelt thanks for the years of service offered by Mrs. Charlton and Mrs. Wilson, in particular, when they step off the board, and when they step off the board, I offer my thanks as well to Mr. Price and Mr. Armstrong. It was the current board, including its new members, the best going forward, and encourage them to spend less time worrying about titles and transitions and coffees with the community, and more time focused on the work of district governance and please, without micromanaging the staff. Kevin and his staff do a fine job, please let them do it, stay in the balcony. Best regards, Dan Charleston, School Board Member, 2009 to 2013. Next is Jennifer Moreland. Dear Mr. Carey, my name is Jennifer Moreland. I'm a parent of three boys, two of whom attend Manning in grades three and five. I'm sure that you don't know who I am. I deliberately aim to stay out of things. I rarely voice my opinion and still would rather believe that District 21 are an educational administration professionals, have only my children, our educators, and our community's best friends at heart. To be fair, I wouldn't be able to pick you out of lineup. I don't go to board meetings, I'm not on the PTO, I do not get involved. The year of our schools, PTO, the year our schools PTO hand out flowers to the parents that volunteered that school year, well, I didn't get one of those yellow flowers. And one of those parents who sits back and trusts our schools, makes decisions based on facts, science, and reason, I am one of those parents, or our child's, children's safety above all. Today, I do not feel as though my children or my community is being protected. I cannot in good conscience remain silent about this issue, and so I'm speaking up. My questions for you and the board are as follows, in no particular orders, as I'm equally alarmed that I have to ask any of these questions. Why are we proceeding as though we fully intend to send our kids back to school in person? How do you intend to effectively mitigate risk for your staff and students with underlying health conditions such as immune compromise, lung, or heart conditions, diabetes, asthma, or obesity? What about those who live with the above compromised individuals in their home? The person, and if in-person learning takes place, are you comfortable with the knowledge that you might lose staff members and students due to COVID-19? Do you acknowledge that COVID-19 is a rapidly evolving virus that we do not fully understand? Where it was previously, previously believed not to affect children, we now see evidence that is nondiscrimin, that is a nondiscriminatory virus? Do you understand that children may die as a result of in-person learning? Do you accept responsibility and are you comfortable making the announcement that one of your staff, parents, or students have died due to coronavirus exposure in our school? Are you preparing for the trauma that is, that is currently and will continue to take place due to coronavirus and in-person learning, particularly for children with additional social, emotional needs? What kind of systems will be implemented by our school, social workers, to provide additional care to do, to, due to this trauma? Will additional leadership be in place, resources given, or services provided to compact this trauma? And how will you tell our children that their teacher died due to COVID-19? When schools shut back down due to the exposure outbreak, what plans are in place to ensure that the remote learning is more successful than it was in the spring? Have our educators been provided with additional resources to successfully set up teaching for children remotely? Who is responsible for overseeing this task? Why have we, as parents, not seen a plan for this? Have a parent sent their child to school because it is the only option provided, and that child is hospitalized or dies as a result of COVID-19? Are you prepared to be sued by grieving parents? How will services traditionally differ in closed settings such as counseling, OT, PT, AAS, math, reading, supports, and speech be arranged? Who is responsible for the cost of testing, care if one of our educators becomes sick or needs to be tested because of exposure? Will our education staff be provided with sick time, PTO? Should they be forced to quarantine or fall sick with the virus? Is the district providing adequate PPP, PPE for our educators and staff? In the event of a confirmed case in our school, what isolating protocols are in place? What permitting protocols are in place? Do you have trained strike team, do you have a trained strike team for execution of contact tracing, cleaning, closing, reopening, and continued learning? Will be sending the communication to a former parent, students, and community of a COVID-19 related death of a teacher or administrator? What happens if a teacher or a child or a family member gets sick and they do not have insurance? Will the district effectively bankrupt that family and pay for their treatment? What about their funeral?
What about their funeral? Please let me say that I have no desire for my children to be stuck at home during remote learning. However, I have even less of a desire for them or anyone in our community to die because they're eager to get back to normal. There is no normal anymore. This is not normal. None of this is okay. The fact that we are deliberating sending our children back to school in the middle of a raging pandemic is incomprehensible. Anything less than a full remote, well-planned, well-funded learning option is unacceptable. And that's Jennifer Moreland. And then John Pappas. I will begin this note with my supreme disappointment that the board opted to let concerned parents ask their questions of the board, not let, okay, let me start over. I will begin this note with my supreme disappointment that the board opted to not let concerned parents ask their questions of the board directly. It is readily apparent the board does not care that the proposed, proposed plans will cause great upheaval in every student's and parent's lives. The decision, decision to take an emailed question can only be described as cowardly. Onto my questions. Considering all kids will be receiving forty percent fewer days of school, two days in school, one day of remote learning, two days off, will teachers and administrators receive a forty percent pay cut? Both my wife and I took ten percent and five percent pay cuts respectively, and our duties are just, are not diminished at all. The World Health Organization, the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, and American Academy of Pediatrics, all agree that children are less likely to become infected and spread COVID-19, that children and adolescents are like, less likely to be symptomatic, and less likely to have severe disease resulting from SARS-CoV-2 infection. Also, all twenty-two European countries and the UK have reopened schools, and none of those countries have seen a COVID-19 spike. The results are from schools being open. Further, all US childcare centers that remained open every day during the worst parts of the outbreak never had an outbreak result in any center. Finally, there have been zero cases worldwide of a student infecting a teacher with COVID-19. In short, reopening schools present a low risk of COVID spread, but keeping children out of school is much riskier. In the American Academy of Pediatrics, the importance of in-person learning is well documented, there is already evidence of the negative impacts on children because of the school closures in spring of 2020. Lengthy time away from school and associate, lengthy time away from school and association, associated interruptions supportive services often results in school isolation, making it difficult for schools to identify and address important learning deficits, as well as child and adolescent physical or sexual abuse, substance use, depression, suicidal ideation. This in turn places children and adolescents at considerable risk of morbidity, in some cases mortality. Beyond the educational impact and social impact of school closures, there has been substantial impact on food security and physical activity for children and families. Given the low risk of COVID-19 infection that children and teachers face while in school, and the high risk of negative general, generational impacts children face while not in school, how can the board justify eliminating sixty percent of in-person learning? Was the scientific and all factual and/or factual basis for eliminating sixty percent of the in-person learning? And I do have, oh, here's one more, and then I gotta pull one off my email. This is Matthew Brittich. As a Westmont resident, I strongly believe that CUST 201 should commit to remote learning in order to reduce the spread of COVID-19 in the community. Following the last few board meetings, it seems unclear what the district's plans are to keep children, students, teachers, and communities safe. As many nearby school districts across Illinois are committed to remote learning, CUST 201 needs to do the same. I highly encourage the reevaluation, any thoughts regarding any of in-kind person learning until COVID-19 is under control in the state. And I can't believe I left it in my office, the WTA sent public comment. And let me pull it up. All right. Dear Members, CUST 201 Board of Education, thank you for the opportunity to address the current situation of safety, safely opening our schools next month as we know. As we know, tonight, the leaders from each building will be presenting their plans for an in-person school day. As our hope that through conversation, all of us can come to see that in-person instruction is not the path to take at this time. During these presentations, please take an extra look at our many areas of concern, primarily issues of social distancing and quarantine. Social distancing is the best measure we all have to protect ourselves from the Nobel Coronavirus. However, the district's plans place students, their families, and teachers at heightened risk of contracting the virus. To start, students from multiple grade levels will be placed in buses together. Busing students forces them within six feet of each other for prolonged periods of time. Additionally, the bus company will not be conducting any health screening. This means that students may be exposed or ragging the bus with an affected student, as students cannot be screened until they arrive at school. Risk for a rapid spread is increased as all students... Oh, thanks. This means that students may be exposed, the risk of rapid spread is increased as all students from a bus carrying an affected student may now spread the virus to other students in the buildings. In order to operate school safely, students will need to maintain face coverings for prolonged periods of time. This will be a particular challenge at the high school, as students will be eating lunch together in pairs, not socially distanced, but they're masked off. In other buildings, multiple rotations of students AMPM are being proposed. It will be extremely challenging for our minimally staff custodial department to adequately disinfect classrooms and common spaces between these student rotations. All these, all the above instances, in addition to other scenarios described in the FAQs below, excuse me, may force the DePage County Health Office to pose a quarantine on our students and faculty. At this point, there are no logistics or curricular plans in place to handle quarantine families or staff. The possibility of multiple repeated periods of quarantine have, have the potential adversely affect the social emotional wellbeing of both students and staff. Now worst-case scenario, the death of a member of CUST 201 community. Social emotional, the social emotional impact on our entire school community is incalculable. One second. A lot of public comment tonight. All right. It is the position of the Westmont Teachers Association, WTA, that the increase of risk of illness and quarantine makes in-person learning an untenable option at this time. The increases in illness and quarantine and the associated loss of instructional minutes will cause a greater slide in the academics that we are already experiencing. Upon the arrival of remote learning 2.0 from the ISBE and continued work from district committees, we can bolster remote learning protocols to ensure student success without increasing health risks. It's disheartening that the WTA is being forced to make this recommendation. It's our hope that, that we see our students and are able to work in an in-person environment. However, there has been only one week of truly collaborative discussion. This includes a meeting last week and one meeting this week. In both instances, the building and district leadership presented their cases for in-person learning, but the district cannot answer WTA questions related to significant threats that in-person learning may pose to the safety of all. At this week's meeting on Monday, an updated detailed list of questions and concerns were compiled and provided to the superintendent. The WTA will, will propose a six-week period of remote learning to begin the school year. During this time, committees, unions, and district building leaders will meet consistently to try to move towards in-person learning. We'll take all of this work and collaborative to promise self and map our clear logistics in order to work towards a safe and healthy environment for students and staff. During the initial six-week period, we can monitor events to reassess the feasibility of safe in-person learning for the remainder of the school year. Thank you for your time. Danielle Flayson and Peggy Shipinski, WTA co-presidents. And I'll give the board copies of their, their attachments. That's the public comment. All right. You know what? I have, well, it's hard, I've got, definitely one says public comment, the other one say question. Should I read them as public comment?
And if one says public comment, I suppose, yeah.
All right. Public comment, this is from Larissa Federley. Dear Board Members, Mr. Carey, administrators, and families of CUST 201, thank you to everyone involved in developing the plans for return to school this fall. I appreciate all the work the administration and staff have put into these plans, still seeing community feedback and learning what other districts are considering. I understand that not, there are not easy decisions to be made, but I also feel confident that all positions are being considered carefully. I understand that every family has their own challenges and needs to make their own tough decisions. I'm encouraged to hear that more structure will be in place for remote learning, as I think we need to be prepared for that potential in the fall to return to this method of learning. But even with the best remote learning plans in place, I believe students need some in-person instruction to start the new school year. We are fortunate to be in a small community where teachers are engaged with our students' learning, and they are able to understand where students need extra support, additional challenges to help them succeed. Let's set our students up for success. I appreciate the district is doing everything it can to follow CDC guidelines, ensure the safety of everyone in our school buildings. They're asking to take the same precautions as when I go to the health club, salon, doctor, or dentist appointment. I think I put my family at more risk going to the grocery store by taking precautions, and fortunately, we are healthy. The point is that our, that our school community is dependent upon everyone in the community we come in contact with to follow the guidelines. If we cannot do that, then we are failing our students and staff. I'm employing everyone in this community, regardless of whether you have children in the district, to set the example for our students and each other and wear masks, to physically distance from others, to carefully listen to each other, other without judgment, and work together to help our students succeed. As always, I thank you for listening, Larissa Federley.
Okay. All right. Next up is a discussion, school district reopening plan for 2021 school year. Sorry, I'm not sure who's...
I'm going first.
You're gonna go first?
Yeah. So I'm gonna give some opening comments, a little bit about our process and some of the things that we do have in place, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Naveen Norris, our Director of Teaching, Learning, and Technology, and she's gonna touch on remote learning and SEL. And then in turn, each of the building administrators will talk a little bit about what their plan looks like for the opening of school. Lynda Flower for the Early Childhood Program. Tim Wyler is joining us via recorded message, he's on vacation, but Lindsay's here as well. And then John Donak and Amy Potron will talk about the junior high, Jack, the high school, and then I'm gonna wrap it up with some, some additional comments. All right. And basically, what the guidelines provide to the school districts is based upon the governor's Restore Illinois, and then guided from the ISBE. And right now, since the early part of July, Illinois is in phase four. In phase four, you can only have inside, no groups larger than fifty, social distancing and face masks are required. And schools can begin to look to open based upon the Department of Public Health guidelines. Phase five is when there is a vaccine available or effective treatment is widely available, or no new cases over the same period. And as referenced in some of the public comments, we're seeing a little bit of an uptick, tick in cases in Illinois, also in DePage County. And so the likelihood of seeing a vaccine or effective treatment or no new cases during the school year, I believe is, is remote. So basically, we'll be looking at either the in-person model or remote learning for the duration of the, the school year. Phase four for schools, what that looks like is, first of all, the ISBE is recommending social distancing, six feet, and so when you think about classroom with seven hundred to nine hundred square feet, it's typically twelve students and a teacher, teacher, face coverings at all times except for when students are eating, temperature checks, you're looking at, because again, you don't want large groups congregating, you're either limited to fifty in a cafeteria or students are having lunch in their classroom. You're also trying to, and it's easier at the elementary level than at the junior high, high school level, but if possible, kids stay in cohorts in one class and the teachers come to them versus the students moving throughout the building. So the teachers are moving, and again, those communal spaces, so staying away from cafeterias, the gyms and the auditorium is what we're, we're trying to avoid. And then there's additional considerations, you know, we know based upon our initial survey, and I should reference this, in terms of the public comment, I think a lot of the questions raised, we're gonna be able to answer during our presentation. We know there's still gonna be some questions, and, and for the one opening public comment, and the board had this discussion at their last board meeting, public comment is not a Q and A with the board, so, and under the current conditions, we really can't have large groups at board meetings. And so that's why we're allowing public comment through email. Again, we'll address a lot of the questions during our presentations, some we won't, but the plan is, and I'll talk about this at the end, that we will have, you know, virtual meetings in which there will be the opportunity for that Q and A and have that discussion with the administrators. So we'll, we'll have that piece in place. But again, we know that based upon the initial survey, and there will be a second survey, but we know some parents are not comfortable sending their children. We know some staff may have some of those extenuating circumstances and may not be able to report to work. So we're operating under those conditions. We know that the remote learning over the last ten weeks that was done on the fly, I mean, we were told on a Friday, March thirteenth, that starting March seventeenth, schools were closed. And so we had that period of time to really kind of put together a plan, and then it was tweaked over time, but we know that we need to see where our students are in terms of, of their learning when we resume. So there's the assessment of students. The other thing that we're relying on, DePage County Health Department, and I'll probably reference this a couple of times, but the, the ISBE guidelines, if you look at it, they talk about six feet of social distancing when possible, and they use that term. And so initially, it, it seems like there's some flexibility there, and the guidelines are not mandates, they're guidelines. But I'm on, sometimes twice a week, Zoom meetings with other DePage superintendents, the Regional Office of Education, and usually the director of the Page County Health Department is on as well. And the Page County Health Department, the question has been asked, do you need to maintain six feet? And the Page County Health Department is very clear, and they said, it's a guideline, but this is what we're gonna explain to you. When you have a case of COVID, or a suspected case of COVID in one of your classrooms or in your school, we're gonna wanna know what that environment is like. And if everybody's wearing masks and you're maintaining six feet of social distancing, then chances are, just that person who is ill or is diagnosed will be the individual who's quarantined, but the other students in the classroom, more than likely will be fine, the teacher will be fine. When you have close contact, and they're defining close contact, at least today, they're defining close contact as less than six feet for fifteen minutes, and that's with or without a mask. So that's why the six feet is so important. You know, if it's, if it's fleeting, you know, somebody walks past somebody, that's not as big of an issue, but it's the fifteen minutes. The reason why I said today is, Kim Anderson, our business manager, was on the phone with one of our attorneys for an unrelated matter, and the attorney shared that Lake County Health Department has just told Lake County schools that, that what we were told about the fifteen minutes, six feet, it was just for that instance that day, they're saying you have to go over a forty-eight hour period and determine what the contact was like. So now that's, that's a little bit of a game changer. And so that's what's happening. As soon as you think we're on pretty firm ground and we kind of know what we have to make sure that we're adhering to, it seems like there can be a change or a tweak. So I'm curious to see if Friday, when I'm in my Zoom meeting, if DePage County Public Health is gonna follow suit. But we're definitely listening to them, and there, there are also the questions about when do we close a school, when do we quarantine, when do we need to do those things? That's with guidance from DePage County Public Health. As soon as we have a suspected case, we're contacting the county health department. They, they do the contact tracing for us, they advise us, they tell us the next step that we have to take. So a lot of that decision-making is not in our hands, but it's through guidance from the, the health department. So then, you know, what then, based upon those criteria, what are the possibilities for the upcoming year? So remote learning is definitely a possibility, and it's remote learning 2.0. Right now, school districts are supposed to have guidance from the State Board of Ed of what is required for remote learning 2.0. We haven't gotten that guidance yet, and we keep, we're, we're being told it's on its way, it's on its way. A couple of things we do know is that some of the flexibility that was allowed to school districts last spring will not be allowed this go around. So attendance will have to be taken, grading... So attendance will have to be taken, grading done, the work counts towards a grade. The amount of time per day with students remotely, that's gonna increase, and that's gonna be mandated. We're just waiting for exactly what those requirements or criteria are gonna be. The other possibility is a hybrid where you have some in-person and some remote learning. And then the other possibility is complete in-person learning, five days a week, full calendar days, full days. And then the calendar flexibility, that was a question, we are getting some flexibility. And one of the recommendations that we are ready for today is about the school calendar and some of the flexibility that school districts are being afforded. These are our guiding principles, and I can't stress this enough, especially with some of the public comment. And I may talk about a little bit more towards the end of our presentation, but I can't stress enough, the health and safety of our students and staff, that is our number one priority. You know, I can't stress that enough. And I think I can speak for, we have several administrators in this room, and I think I can speak for them. I can't remember the last time an alarm clock woke me up because I lose sleep. Oh, we're this. And so I don't take those comments lightly. And so when we're looking at what we think is best for students and best for our staff and best for our school community, trust me, that is our top priority. And we're not going into this lightly. We wanna make sure that whatever we do is meaningful and engaging for our students. And we know, you know, the, our school community was very forgiving in the spring. You know, I think everybody realized, you know, we were, you know, doing this on the fly, and people were very forgiving. But we know that this go-around, if remote learning is required, it's gotta be rigorous, it's gotta be robust. And our students have to receive a quality education, we have to meet the needs of all of our students. Nadine's gonna talk a little about the socio-emotional piece. We think we can meet the needs of our students in-person remotely, we think we can meet that socio-emotional need, which is so important. You know, our students and staff need that consistency, that stability. And then we've already, last spring, if the board remembers, the school districts are allowed five additional planning days. And so we opted as a district to use those at the end of the day to actually begin staff development for this coming school year, not knowing what this coming school year would bring. So, you know, improving our learning and skills in remote learning, we've continued to provide additional support, and then there's also a plan for this coming school year, the staff development will be ongoing to make sure that our staff is in the best possible So the process that we've been working on, we actually had, and every employee in the district was invited to be a part of this process. And we had just a Zoom meeting, and as many people who wanted to be a part of it were a part of it. And we kind of went through what the charge of, for us was. And that was to begin planning for the opening of the school year and what it's gonna look like, under different constraints. You know, what would remote learning look like? What would in-person look like? How can we do this, knowing that we're gonna be in phase four? And we have to adhere to these criteria. Our staff then chose different subgroups, and so we had different subgroups around grade levels in terms of building, we had a general language group, we had operations group, which focused on the cleaning of buildings, food service, transportation, all those things. And then those, some groups met several times, they invited parents, in some cases, students to be a part of the process. And so the question that they were charged with is, okay, what is in-person learning gonna look like in phase four? And then what does remote learning 2.0 look like? Some of the things that, you'll hear consistently, but some of the things that we do know, if we go with the in-person learning, is that masks will be required, and we have purchased enough masks to provide every student, every staff member with three reusable masks. In addition to that, and we have extras, you know, we didn't do an exact count, but we have extras. And then we also have on hand thousands of disposable masks, because we know, you know, in some cases, students don't remember to bring their school ID, so now they gotta remember to bring their mask. And so we'll have that. We're committed to the six feet of social distancing. At one time, we were kind of looking at, well, maybe, what if it was four feet? But after conversations with the Page Public Health, the message was no, it's gotta be six feet. You know, we can't skimp on that. Parents will be requested to certify that their student is symptom-free before their student boards the bus. We're hoping that, you know, we contract our bus service, and so we have to work within what service they're able to provide. They don't want the liability of doing temperature checks. Plus, the other problem that we all discussed was, okay, so there's a second grader on a bus stop that the bus driver takes the temperature of, and the student's running a fever. Now what? You know, the bus driver can't leave, a second grader on the corner, and, you know, how do we get personnel out there? And so some of those logistics. So, parents will have to certify though, that their child is fever-free, have no COVID-19 symptoms before their child is allowed to board a bus. The plan is then, and the principals will cover this, plan varies a little bit, what happens when the bus arrives at the school? But basically, adults greet that bus, they're checking all temperatures before those students can even leave the bus, because you don't want a situation where possibly the students walking through other students. Students will be going through designated doors, car riders, they'll have their temperature checked before they're out of their car, walkers as soon as they arrive, but everybody's getting their temperature checked, all staff members are getting their temperature checked. Admin's gonna be helping with that. We're also working, and this is one of the things that we are discussing with our unions, but there are situations now where people may have had a stipend in position where we don't need that stipend now. You know, we don't need bus supervision, the kids are gonna be going to a classroom. And so those individuals then will be asked to, for the stipend, then they'll be part of our temperature checkers. If they don't, they're not comfortable doing it, that's fine, but then that gets posted and, you know, the person who wants to do it. So there is a plan to use additional personnel for the temperature checks. Six feet social distancing. And then, again, the parents are certifying, and we're doing the temperature checks for all of our students and staff. We are increasing our cleaning protocols, and so commonly touched surfaces, they'll be cleaned multiple times during the day. We've purchased special backpacks that have a liquid sanitizer in them, that a custodian can go in and literally spray a classroom, a restroom, any type of room, and the chemical sits for a few minutes, and then that area is disinfected. And so some of the concerns about possibly having one group of students in the morning, and John will go over this in more detail, in some cases, we're using different rooms. And so there isn't even different groups going in there. But, you know, we are confirming that our custodians will have enough time to get that building sanitized, cleaned, before a new group of students come in. In the event that we have a student or staff member that show up with a fever or symptoms or during the school day, every building is gonna have, and more than one, a quarantine room where that person will be. An adult will be with them with the proper PPE. That person will stay there until they can be taken from the school. The locations are rooms that are either very close to an outside exit, or the room has an outside exit. That way, again, somebody doesn't have to walk through a building if they are suspected to have a symptom. That room then cannot be used for 24 hours. It can't even be cleaned for 24 hours. It will sit for 24 hours, then the custodian will go in and clean that room, and then it can be used as a quarantine site, which is why we have different rooms available. And again, all of our suspected cases are reported to DuPage County Health, and then they provide us the guidance that we need for, they'll provide, they'll do the contact tracing, they'll reach out to contact individuals and families if, to let them know that somebody, their child or, you know, the adult was in contact. The notification from the school district has to be very generic, but we will be alerting, you know, schools in general, but then letting them know that if there's any action they need, a representative of DuPage County Health will be contacting them and informing them. So, but all those protocols are in place. And then, right now, I'm gonna pick up with this piece, but I'm gonna turn it over to Nadine. And then she's gonna talk a little bit about the...
I'm just gonna make a few comments about the two topics that you'll hear in detail from the principals and how these specific areas will be addressed. But I kind of wanted to feature these two topics because they are extremely important and mentioned a great deal in some of the comments and feedback we've been getting from parents as well as the teachers. So, you know, as Kevin mentioned, on March 17th of this year, teachers were asked to do something extraordinary, completely pivot what we know as being teaching and learning, and change everything we do. No training that we had in pre-service or throughout the years of our career provided the capacity to change what we do in two days. So, I mean, what we did was pandemic teaching. It can't be really characterized as remote learning because we didn't have the time to plan. So throughout that process, we have to, we took a look at the challenges and the successes that we experienced in those few months, and we overlay those with what we know as high-quality teaching and learning. And we prepare ourselves to build a program that is meaningful and rigorous for our students. So you'll be hearing specific plans about face-to-face learning, but our principals will also discuss specific plans about what teaching and learning will look like in the event that we'll, we won't be face-to-face. So we, the themes of what I'll touch on are in these four priorities. So this idea of establishing strong relationships and addressing the needs of our students, and how we will engage our students and promote this excitement for learning and lifelong learning skills, and what we'll do to provide an authentic learning experience, regardless of what the environment is and what setting that we're in. And also, I'll talk a little bit about how we'll take specific care to make sure that all students have access and the support that they need to maintain those goals. So as I said, at the end of May, in the coming months, we have been doing a great deal of learning. We've relied heavily on our colleagues and our instructional coaches to gain confidence and competence. And we know, for example, many of us who are technology challenged, we relied on our colleagues to help us along the way, and we'll continue to do that. We have, true online learning or true remote learning has to be intentional. We have to plan with an intentionality to do, to provide a high-quality teaching and So with regard to that build, the first thing we know we have to do is we have to build those connections. Our students are coming to us, many of them with some degree of trauma, some degree of loss, food insecurity, perhaps unemployment, maybe someone in their family became sick. So regardless of the fact that we provide social-emotional learning and we have programs in place, we are going to partner with this company to ensure that we have a very robust program, not just for our students, but for our teachers and our community. So this idea of self-care and mindfulness, this company will provide resources that are not just for teaching and learning, but also for other members of our stakeholders. So the projected outcomes of this particular program is the focus on those relationships. When students come in the beginning of the school year, our primary focus is to develop those caring communities. Students are invited to participate and develop those relationships and to ensure that we have a foundation. So even before we start to dive into content, we are focused on working through those relationships and making sure that there's trust between the teachers and the students. That becomes challenging if we're not face-to-face. So this organization is going to provide coaching on, you know, on-demand coaching for our teachers to shore up those situations where we're in unfamiliar territory with regard to building those relationships online. So the focus is really about developing those positive relationships and making those connections, and understanding our emotions, and understanding the impact of trauma in our lives and how it impacts teaching and learning. And then increasing that connection between the students and colleagues. This summer, 24 of our staff members and our administrators engaged in really intense training with mindful practices. The teachers volunteered on their own, they, you know, they wanted to take advantage of this opportunity. It included 10 hours of learning, and it focused on many different aspects of addressing this, these outcomes. Teachers signed up, either they're either finishing up the program or they are engaged in the learning right now. And those administrators and teachers will help us build capacity to obviously grow this program. By partnering with mindful practices, those resources are available to all of our teachers. So the approach for this particular program is three-pronged. The potential for daily check-ins for all of our students. And with those check-ins, the program provides personalized mindfulness solutions. So this could be done for older students on an app where they check in every day, and then the data is, teachers have access to that data, it's extremely confidential, teachers can do a status of their class and understand where the focus is for those students, and respond to it directly, or the student can work independently with those solutions. There are weekly schedules, or they can be used on-demand of teaching sessions that teachers can use as part of their online or their in-person learning. Teachers can use those on-demand videos for themselves as part of their self-care program. And the resources are also available to our families. So Mindful Practices has a monthly schedule for families and for parents to leverage research-based resources to address issues, stress, trauma-informed teaching, that's available not just for our students, but for our families as well. And the coaching that's available through Mindful Practices can be personalized, and the professional learning can be geared directly toward the needs of our teachers, and it's job-embedded and ongoing throughout the year. So we're excited about that possibility, and I think the strength of this program is the fact that the resources are not just available for teaching and learning and for students to use independently, but they are also available to help our teachers take care of themselves and our families to work through these issues that we have. and our families to work through these issues that we have. So Kevin touched on the importance of the changes and the requirements for remote learning. The state, in order to make it a little bit less of a traumatic situation, left us a lot of flexibility in March. That's not available to us anymore. So you'll see structures in place where there'll be specific schedules for instruction and schoolwork for students. There'll be some form of daily attendance. If a student is not going to attend school remotely, then they'll be called in sick by their parents. And there'll be specific processes in place to capture those competencies just like we do in face-to-face learning. So there'll be some grade, some grade structure or some feedback structure where there's, where students will know where they are in those standards. The access to many types of learning materials. And we've spent a great deal of time in our professional development, developing those learning materials and those methods in which we're going to deliver instruction. And the learning management systems, those platforms that we use for students to acquire those lessons, those will be consistent depending on the grade level. And it's based on what's appropriate for those students and their age. So, and then also in addition to that, we're really going to strive to develop and maintain two-way communication between families and the teachers. And there's going to be specific accountability to make sure that we're connecting with those families so that we don't wait six weeks down the line and find out in a survey that something wasn't working. So the communication, the principals have, will go into this in greater detail, but featuring the fact that we're going, there will be class schedules and contact information. There'll be expectations of scheduled meetings and with, in advance with class calendars. There'll be office hours or virtual meetings. The platforms will be specific. You'll hear Seesaw for the little ones, the Otis platform for elementary and junior high. And the high school will continue to use Google Classroom as their platform. And then for those folks who require materials in paper, those pickups and drop-offs will be scheduled or worked through at the building level. The professional development that was done at the end of the school year addressed four instructional moves that are done by teachers regardless of what setting they're in. We worked to align the right tools to ensure that the moves were effective in a digital environment. Understanding what high-quality teaching is important, is important because it becomes so much more complex when teachers are teaching online. Teachers can't just simply convert what they do in the classroom to an online mode. So the first thing we have to do is find ways for teachers to model or instruct or teach or, you know, demonstrate skills and concepts. There has to be a method in which students require, students will engage in collaboration and social learning. The teacher needs to be available and work in structures so that they can guide the students along the way and know where the students are so that they can correct misunderstandings as they happen. And then obviously, practice makes learning permanent. So this idea of students having the opportunity to work independently to practice those skills and then receive feedback along the way so that they have the opportunity to revise and redo their work. When we designed the professional development opportunities, we worked on learning navigations, creating interactive recordings, feedback loops between students and teachers, methods of assessing learning, and strategies for students and teachers to interact with one another to maximize learning in a virtual environment. Technology doesn't just provide digital worksheets. Tools have to be used in a way that transforms that experience for students. So when teachers are designing tasks online, they have to be purposeful and intentional to nurture those connections and build relationships with students. They have to leave the space and time for students to be able to connect with one another. They need to invite students to take responsibility for their own learning by providing resources that kids can go to at their own time and when they need it. They have to manage their time in order for individual check-ins and giving feedback that is specific and actionable. Even online, we have to circulate and observe student learning. And then at the end, we have to celebrate our progress and our competencies toward those standards. I would encourage our community to please give us grace. This is a learning experience. This is a journey. We assure you, we've done a lot of work and we will continue to do work to make sure that what we're doing meets our students' needs as best we can. But once again, this is new for us and we are following the research and we're following high-quality teaching and learning practices that include these instructional moves. Along the way, we have to provide, we have to ensure that we have, we meet the needs of all of our learners. So right now, the position we're in, in March, we deployed about 1,000 devices to our families and/or supported and deployed 1,000 devices to our students to ensure they had access to devices and the internet. We have deployed and we have a few more wireless access points that families who don't have good internet can leverage. We won a grant and we have wireless access points in all of, at all of our buildings so that you can literally go in the parking lot and access the internet. So we're installing those right now. We have to provide instructional supports in many other ways. And we will continue to work out systems that will maintain that high-quality support. And measuring progress will start whether or not we are in-person or remotely. The elementary students, for example, will be taking the eye-ready assessment to start them down their learning path with math and reading. And once again, I'm stressing this idea of regular communication between families and teachers to ensure that if something isn't working, because we don't want teachers or parents to feel like they are their child's teacher, they are their child's coach and learning partner. And if something isn't working or is challenging, we want to know that right away so that we can shore up that teaching and learning. So I think that covers pretty much what I wanted to kind of reinforce for those two important topics. Do you have any specific questions?
I just have one question as far as the devices that students have at home.
Yep.
If anyone's having an issue with their particular device, it would be good to know about it sooner rather than later. So who should they contact to kind of work through that?
Thanks for asking that question. That hotline is, the hotline is still in place. So, and it's interesting, I got two or three phone calls this week as a matter of fact. And so the process is that someone will, and it's interesting because now I'm getting a lot more messages directly from students and not parents. So kids are getting to know me, which is super awesome. So calling that phone number or even emailing me, letting me know, we, no questions asked. We don't do a lot of troubleshooting. We just deliver you a new device. So I went to two parents' houses last Thursday and just gave new devices, or switched out devices. So we'll continue to do that. We did it, we've been doing it all summer and we did it. I was out driving around delivering replacement devices probably every day between March and May because, you know, things happen and we don't want the technology to be a challenge. 99% of the time, we brought the device back to the office, it was fine, but we didn't, you know, just make sure that everybody has what they need. So we'll continue that process. Any other questions?
I have a question. So first, a comment. Thanks for your presentation on the social-emotional learning program that you're putting in place. I wanted to clarify, that same program will be used whether we are in the classroom in the fall or remote. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, that is correct.
And then my other question goes back to one of the public comments. I believe it was Dana Hay Jackson. And I just want to make sure, you know, you talked about the equity of instruction for students. Are we going to get into more detail in the presentations by the principals in terms of what we're doing for ELL families or special education students as it relates to either in the classroom or remote?
There'll be much more specific information with regard to special education.
Okay.
The, and the work that we do with subgroups and EL, the EL population will be addressed, special education in particular. That, how that design falls out will depend greatly on what our status is at some point in time. So that, so you'll, we'll be able to, you'll have that information in much more detail.
By status, you mean in-person or remote?
Right.
Okay, great. I just wanted to make sure for the parents who I know are waiting to hear about that.
That's a very important, yeah, it's a very important topic. And so then you will be getting soon, maybe not in the level of detail that we, right now, but there's a lot, there's a lot of implications, a lot of implications.
Yeah. And I appreciate you mentioning grace and I'll put that in conjunction with that comment. I mean, I know we're trying to get through this step-by-step. And so I think, you know, there's a lot to be considered. So thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, so I'm going to turn this over to Lindsay and I think, no?
Linda.
Linda, oh, I'm sorry, Linda.
Okay, two L's.
You know what? And you know what? Linda will not hit, this isn't going to be involved with Linda's presentation, so, okay.
All right. So I put, uh, thank you, Nadine. And thanks for the opportunity to present some remarks. I actually put a little bit of a planning document on each of your desks. And I, up on the top, you see, it says it was updated July 20th. Actually, it was updated today at about 3:00 because we got some more information. And you'll see some of the information that appears in my notes here in italics. So I'm talking a little bit about what early childhood could potentially look like if we are back in person. And I had the opportunity to meet with the early childhood teachers and the speech therapist and also the occupational therapist. And then we had some guidance from student, from our student nursing department. And so this plan was, this tentative plan was developed with input from those various individuals. Up on the top, there's just some facts. It's a summary. I'm not going to go over that. It's really, it's what is, what we have currently, what our, what our program looked like before. We started with the school closures and the other changes to our program. So you can look at that as a reference if you'd like, or I'm happy to answer a question about it, but I won't, I won't really go into that. In terms of what our plan would be like, I'd say that our teachers unanimously want our kids back in school. And when we were talking about what we do, two days a week, would we do four days a week? Would we have a day to clean? The goal was really to get our kids in school five days a week. The adjustment that they're suggesting is actually, and I'll start at the first comment here. We actually, we have half-day sessions. So we have AM and PM sessions in each of two classrooms. And the suggestion was that, because we're using then a different cohort of kids coming into the same classroom and working on the same surfaces with similar materials, the question was, how can we get both cohorts of those children in? That provides stability for the kids, stability for the families. And at the same time, we want to allow our engineering staff to get in and execute the protocols that they've spent so much time planning. So the suggestion was that instead of having two and a half-hour sessions, which is what we currently had, that we would move to two-hour sessions. So for example, our morning session, instead of being 8:30 to 11:00, would be 8:30 to 10:30. Our afternoon session, instead of being 12:00 to 2:30, would be 12:30 to 2:30. That would give us two hours in the middle of the day to work on all of the cleaning that we need to do. And as you might imagine, with three and four and five-year-olds, there's quite a few things that they touch and quite a few things that need to be cleaned. I had a conversation with Mr. Smith, who is our Director of Facilities and Buildings and Grounds. And he assured me that the time that we had was more than enough time to get into the classrooms and clean. And Kevin referenced the fact that Mr. Smith, early on, was seeking efficient ways to clean our buildings. And we've ordered some of the backpack sprayers and we're happy to have those and know that we can use those to good advantage. We have one full-day classroom that in, you know, last year before we closed, was meeting six hours a day. Our recommendation is that we'll meet for four hours. So instead of going 8:30 to 2:30, we'll go 8:30 to 12:30. The lunch service, I should have said food service protocols are really under discussion. Our early childhood classroom, our full-day self-contained special ed classroom, they actually have lunch. They have a group lunch and they sit together. And obviously lunch, there's a nutritional aspect to that, but there's much more than that. It's a sharing, it's an exchange, it's a practice of manners. It's a practice of expressive language. It's waiting your turn. It's many, many things that they're focused on during the lunch period. We don't think we're going to be able to operate that time the way that we were accustomed to. But we're also, you know, mindful of the fact that we may need to look at some type of food service there. And so that piece is under discussion, as is the snack that's provided in our half-day classes. And that snack actually is per our grant and per the preschool-for-all program. So that's something that we are finalizing, something we're looking at. Kevin's talked about this. I'll just reiterate, all of our kids will wear masks. I've put a little phrase in there. I've talked about mask breaks. We've actually been in collaboration with many other early childhood centers and they've talked about the importance of that. So we're talking about what that could look like. We certainly want to, want to, I'm going to say more than encourage. We want to stress the need to wear masks and that's something that we are going to require. But we also know with our little ones, possibly as they're just coming back to school and they're getting accustomed to that, they may need a break from that for a minute. So the teachers are talking about how that break could happen and the nice weather could happen outside with quite a bit of distance between them. But we're working on that. I think that it's likely that a mask break is, is not going to be something that we need long-term, but it's something that we want to plan for and something that we want to be prepared to carry out if we need to. But that's just in recognition of some of the needs of the different kids and being mindful and respectful of those needs. We're also preparing our kids with social stories and talking about the use of masks through social stories. And that's something that will be focused on. I want to mention that the district, it was Kevin's presentation, he talked about ordering the different equipment supplies. The district has ordered masks for everybody, but we've also ordered masks with a transparent inlay here because that's going to be important for some of our kids. And I won't go into the kids that are going to need that. But we want to have those in stock and we have more than a few. And for example, our kids that perhaps, you know, read lips need to see that in order to do that. Some of our kids sort of struggle with taking the perspective of somebody else and reading a cue and reading a facial cue. They need to see as much of a face as they possibly can and at the same time, be protected. So Mr. Smith, you know, in collaboration with Kim, with Kevin, ordered those for us as well. And I'm really grateful for that. I've talked about the fact that obviously all of our staff will wear masks and other, what we call PPE, they'll be wearing those. And it'll depend on actually what they're doing during the day and what their role requires. But we have talked with the staff about what they, what they need. We've talked about obviously the masks, the gloves. Some of our staff will be wearing the face shields as well. Some of our folks that are doing related services will use the Plexiglas partition between the student and the therapist. And all of those things are planned for. The classrooms themselves are, when you look at our grants and we've, we've been in a really fortunate place as a district and I just, all of this goes to, all this recognition goes to our goes to our early childhood teachers, but they were awarded the gold seal, the gold quality seal from early childhood, and after being awarded that for a year, and then another year, another year, the last time they received that award, it was for a five-year period of time, because they just consistently showed their exceptional programming. Well, one of the things that's so important in that programming is the idea of centers, so we know that in order to, to do what we need to do to get our kids back in school and keep everybody safe and follow protocols, we're going to have to look at centers in a whole new way. So they're talking about, some of our centers are going to go away for a while, so some of our centers where we're the police officer, or we are the, you know, we're the firefighter, or we're the doctor, and the kids are wearing the different, I don't want to call them costumes, but the different forms of dress and hats, those are going to be put away for a while. Some of our toys and our blocks that are put out in centers, and the kids work on those collaboratively and communally, some of those things will be put away. In other cases, what we'll be doing is we'll actually be dividing those in half, so that when they're coming in to clean in between the two sessions, we're not worried about cleaning all the toys and the blocks and all of that, but we're dividing those things in half, so we've got a half for the morning, a half in the afternoon, and it gives us some additional time to clean for, for the next group that comes in. I don't know if that makes sense, but I think you sort of get what I'm trying to say. There's a little note in here, you see, it starts with the italicized statement, and that actually came through today in about 3:00, so I just put that in, in terms of how we are restricting or discouraging any borrowing or sharing of any items, we don't want the kids to bring books to school, to bring toys to school, to bring other things to school, so we'll be mindful of that, and that will be a guideline that we follow. If we are in a situation where something is going to be used by a couple of kids in common, then we're going to follow all of the protocols that we need to follow in terms of cleaning the things after every use, and certainly that we're doing a really good job washing hands. When I came into the early childhood program, one of the things I was, one of the things I was struck by was an in-service I went to for directors of the program, and they actually talked about the recommended number of times that an early childhood or preschool students should wash his or her hands during the day. It was amazing to me, and I think it was something, I don't want to be too much of an exaggerator here, but I actually think it was like 18 times in a day they were supposed to wash their hands, and it was off the bus, and it was just, you know, you take your coat off before you do this, before you do that, and our group has done a great job with that, so that's just a protocol that we have followed because it's been a program requirement, so I don't see hand washing as a concern for us. And we also have, and I think I talk about this later on, but we also are in a really good place in terms of our classrooms, because we have large sinks in our classrooms with multiple faucets, and that was really good planning when the folks came through and did the reconfiguration of our classrooms, so I don't anticipate any issues with hand washing. Our speech and occupational therapy may take place in the classroom, we're talking about that, we want to let the safety practice really guide us, but we might be pushing in those services, if so, following the appropriate safety protocols, and we also, in some cases, might be pulling out, in which case the kids are in either the occupational therapist's office or the speech therapist's office with the appropriate Plexiglas shield, and then those therapists are wiping down those surfaces, when I say surface, like a table, that they might be working on, they're wiping that down in between students. We have, we've been in a very good place, we've been fortunate enough to have a sensory room, we think we're probably not going to be using that the same way that we have used it in the past. The sensory room may be used by the occupational therapist, because that's been a part of some of the goals that the kids with IEPs are working on, but if we can do those another way, that's what we're going to do, so safety is going to be the priority with everything. Transportation, we have transportation through Westway, through Sunrise, sometimes through a taxi service, though we expect that the transportation will continue. Our tuition students do not receive transportation through the district, and in a little bit, I'm going to talk about the parent response to a two-question survey that we sent out, asking about transportation, asking about whether or not they would send their children back to school, so I'll get to that probably in the next two or three minutes. In terms of transportation, I think it's important to know that our little kids don't wait on a corner for a bus, but they have door-to-door pickup, so when we talk about parents, you know, certifying that the children are asymptomatic, we're talking about a parent who is doing that for a student, and then we're also obviously following the district protocols in terms of taking temperatures. Right now, our parents get on the buses with our kids and they do the snapping of the safety harness, we're looking at that in terms of what the bus company prefers, we don't want to add too many, you know, additional folks onto that bus situation, so we're really looking at that piece, it's something that if our buses have attendants on the bus, then the attendant may be the person that does that, and that will be the protocol that we follow. In terms of the building logistics, I'm just going to go very quickly, the classrooms, we talked about being cleaned daily in between morning and afternoon, we have common bathrooms in the hallway, we've enjoyed having that, because as kids get closer to leaving us and going to kindergarten, we like the idea that they're practicing standing in line and using a bathroom and waiting their turn. We probably won't be using those common bathrooms unless we have a really unique circumstance for a student, we won't be using any of the water fountains in the hallway. Each one of our classrooms has a bathroom in the classroom, and we'll be following the protocols for student use in those bathrooms. Some of our kids still require toileting assistance, and it's been our teacher or our teacher assistants that have provided that support for the kids in previous months, and so what we're doing is we're talking about what we need in order for the students needs to be respected and the staff to be safe, and so they've gone over the things that they need, and they're all things that we'll have available to us. We do have some things that we understand we're going to be giving up, like our morning activities, that was a great opportunity for all of our kids to get together, and they got together in the hallway, and they were often shoulder to shoulder, doing their music and different things, just as a way to start the day, and doing their version of the pledge, which is actually a song that they sang. We're eliminating that for the time being, and they'll do their morning routines in their classroom. We've identified at least one area where we can isolate students, it's very close to an exit door, and we're looking at a second area right now, we just want to double-check that, that's fine, because we don't want to, in a block, any exits, so we're just double-checking something, but we're very aware of the need to do that, and it's something that we're finalizing right now. We've got a wonderful space downstairs at lower level, we've used that for group activities, for dance and for music and for different things. We are likely not going to be using it that same way now, but it gives us additional space if we do have to spread out, and that's something that we're really grateful to have available to us. Talking with the junior high, it's actually one of our junior high teachers that comes over and does music, we talked about the possibility of that teacher not coming over, but potentially zooming the music lesson into the lower level, and so we're hoping to use it for that. There's some information there in terms of staffing, and if you kind of look at that, I just wanted you to be aware that we're not looking at any changes in that area, and then you'll see a comment about remote learning. We understand if that's a decision that's made, then that's something that we'll move to, but I just want to stress that respecting and recognizing all of the comments that folks have made about some of the concerns that they have about the in-person learning, the early childhood team was unanimously supportive of us being in-person again. If you look at the, if you just flip and you look at the very last page, I just wanted to give you some idea of what our membership projections are right now, so that you could see. The first, so I'm on the, you can tell it's the end of my presentation, so I'm on that, first one says PFA. One of our teachers has 14 in the morning, and that includes one student that pays tuition. In the afternoon, that same teacher has six. The teacher that teaches in the adjacent room has 14 in the morning, and that includes three students that are paying tuition, and in the afternoon has nine, and then our full-day class right now has six, and really by design, we had decided years ago that we were not going to go above eight in that classroom, so that's why that's lower, and that's probably a conversation for another day in terms of the reasons for that in that particular classroom. We did send out a two-question survey to parents, asking if they'd send their early childhood to in-person learning, and if they'd need the transportation, so regarding their intent to send their child back to school, 89% said yes, 11% said no. I broke that down into numbers, so 25 said, there were 28 people that responded, 25 said yes, three said no. I have to talk with the early childhood teachers, because I'm not sure if the three that said no correspond to any of the tuition families, because that tends to be a slightly different situation, but we'll look at that. Regarding their intent to use the bus, 50% of those that responded said yes, they would use the bus, and then our tuition kids don't qualify for buses, so parents bring them to school, and then 39% or 11 of our families said no, they wouldn't be using the bus. So that's a little bit about parent input, and I hope that answers some of our questions about our in-person plans, so. If I can answer any of your questions, I'm happy to do it now or later.
Just, for the uses of the bus, do we have any idea if that's a big change from what has been the pattern in the past as far as 50% yes, 39% no?
Actually, last year, thank you, Mr. Pierce, for the question, I think last year we actually saw that more of our parents, for whatever reason, wanted to drive their kids to school, so virus notwithstanding, they just liked driving their kids to school, they, it's kind of interesting because of the way we come together in the morning, and families would be out there in the morning, and sometimes there was a little, just a nice exchange, discussion between families, and so prior to this time, there were families who just opted to do that, so I don't see that as, oh my gosh, they don't want to send their kids on the bus, but more, this is what we've been doing, and we'd like to continue that.
I also wonder with more parents, or at least one parent maybe, working more at home, that that might be a preference to drive or drop off or walk your student, if that's a possibility.
I certainly think that's a possibility, and I don't want to, I don't want to mislead anybody with the survey, we would have, if we looked at all of the folks that could have responded at this time, we probably have at least two-thirds that have responded, so we'll keep getting those responses. It's not like today was the last day, and now we're not going to consider input, we want to hear from everybody. There was one other thing I wanted to say about the membership, so that you had kind of a context for it. In those preschool for all classrooms, we, in each of those AM and PM sessions, we are maxed at 15, so when you see that there are 14, we're just one away from full enrollment. The guidelines that came from the state board are really, because previous to this time, their strong guidance was to fill those spots as quickly as we could. Their guidance now is they'd like to see the spots filled, but they understand if, basically, if that's not the case. What we have to be mindful of is, in our preschool classes, so our kids that are in the full-day class, and I mentioned that we've got six in the class, our kids that are in that class, all of those children have individual education plans, so we are required, but I prefer to say it's our opportunity, to provide the education for those children, and we must provide that education. When we look at our classes, they have a morning and an afternoon cohort, those are blended classrooms, so in each of those sessions, so I think of it as like four cohorts, in each of those sessions, we have some children with IEPs, some children that come to us through the preschool screening, that don't, wouldn't have IEPs, and then we have children whose parents pay tuition, so they're blended, they're blended classrooms. So what we are mindful of is any of our children that come to us with IEPs, we must have spots for those children, so as we look at our classes for next year, we want to look at our preschool screening information, we work with Child and Family Connections because they have children coming through early intervention, and we kind of transition children from that program into our program, so we understand that we have some spaces available, but we also know that we've got to fill those spaces, we have to have spaces for our children with individual education plans, and we also want to be aware that we don't want to have so many children that the social distancing becomes something that we can't do and can't do well. So those are some of the considerations with the enrollment. Just like throw that out.
I guess I'll just add a little question here or a comment, I don't know if you're aware, but the Westmont Park District has ended their early childhood program for this fall, so you might be getting more phone calls from parents.
I got a call today, I got a call today.
Now you're telling me that we're pretty much maxed out here, though, right?
Well, if we, so if this was last year, and we were looking at this number, at these numbers, then I would tell you that just looking at the numbers, we've got, in the one classroom, we've got room for like 10 more kids between the morning and the afternoon, and in the other classroom, we've got room for seven, seven more kids.
Okay.
So that's where we would be in a normal circumstance. I think that it's also important to say that when we talk about getting some of our kids through preschool screening, we do, this year we do our first screening in August, and our next screening is in October, and we really like to be full by about that time. As our school year starts and we see exactly what school's going to look like, we'll have a better idea of how many additional kids we can take, because we'll actually know what our spaces look like and what the distance requirements are, but I think I can assure you that we can start the school year in a very good place in terms of following all the mandates and meeting the requirements, and that's what we want to do if we can get our kids back in the building.
Are you anticipating more of a balance then between the morning and the afternoon classes?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Sometimes that happens because, and we're happy to do this, we give parents the option, and we ask them, and sometimes we do it because we've got other considerations, like we might have siblings and we're splitting, or those kinds of things, but yes, if you look at our enrollment, like last year, you would see that balance was certainly there, I think by the end of the October screening, so.
So Linda, thanks for your presentation, I think this was really well-done. I have a comment and then a question. My comment is more directed at Kevin for the end of the meeting. I have questions about the cleaning protocols in between the morning and the afternoon, and I just anticipate, Kevin, for you, I know that that structure is being recommended in a couple of different schools within our district, and I personally would like to hear more about what those cleaning protocols will be to ensure that, you know, we're really able to properly clean in between those two sections, so that's more of a comment. On the PPE, that's specifically required for your group, Linda, as you deal with younger students, are you confident you'll be able to access the appropriate amount of gloves, gowns, masks, that sort of thing, when you're, you know, helping with bathroom for little ones?
I don't have any reason to think that we won't, I know that it's been hard to get some equipment, for example, it's been hard to get gloves at times and things like that, but we actually had some gloves that we had from last year, and I know that that's something that Joe was working on for the entire district, but I feel, I personally, my opinion, I feel very confident that we'll have what we need.
Okay, and then, there's a question buried in this comment, but it also applies to some of the other members that will be presenting tonight. We have done a lot of work on what protocols should be in place, and I think that's exactly what we should be doing and very appropriate. Where I, you know, once we get to the place where we feel really confident that we have the right protocols in place, I think the conversation will have to pivot a little bit to how are we ensuring that the protocols are being adhered to? And I specifically have, you know, for the early childhood centers, I think that is going to be a challenge, just the little ones like to be hugged, and they, you know, they like to hug each other, and kisses are rampant, and I understand that's obviously not going to be part of the protocols, but at some point, I think that the community, and I know I would be interested in hearing how we, in a sensitive fashion, are going to address adherence to the protocols, especially when dealing with our younger students, but really across all the age groups.
And I think that it don't in any way... And I think that I don't in any way, I want to give you a simplistic response to this, because that's one of the things that the teachers talked about. And they said, you know, from their perspective, so much of it is, I'm holding your hand, we're taking a walk, I'm guiding you and all. So, much of it is that. So, much of it is, they're next to you, and you have, it's just the way that they operate, and it's a part of the kindness and the nurturing and the care, and it's the way that the children perceive that and what that means. So, the teachers are very aware of that and have been talking about how do we best prepare for that. And again, I don't want to be simplistic, but it's the idea of social sorts, it's the idea of teaching, it's the idea of, you know, talking with students, you know. They do a great job of working with families and meeting with parents and talking about preparing kids for different things. So, do I think that it will be easy? No, I don't think it'll be easy at all. But do I think that they'll be able to do it? I do, because the alternative would be that we couldn't be in person if we had the opportunity to be there. And that's really what people want. They want to be able to see their kids, they want to be able to have exchanges with their kids. They want to, the remote learning and all of the things that the district has put in place, and all the fine work that's been done, and all of the support that we've gotten from technology, all the things that have happened, all of those things are there. But it is tough to have a three-year-old in front of a, in front of a, it is tough. When you talk about early childhood education and the importance of it, and why you have it, and you talk about getting those therapies that are needed and providing them at that early level, because you want to build that strong foundation. And then you say, if you're in remote learning, really, how do you do occupational therapy on a computer screen? How do you do physical therapy on a computer screen? So, I don't think any of this is, and I don't want to minimize this, but I don't think any of this is easy for anybody. And every grade level has their unique opportunities. But for us, we really feel strongly about getting the kids in school, so.
Yeah. And I appreciate that completely, and I think what you said also about how we can help parents prepare their kids. I know I've heard that comment throughout the community of preparing their kids to wear a mask and preparing their kids for just what the environment is going to look like when they do get into or return to school. I think there's lots of eager parents who are ready to help with that.
Thank you for the questions.
Am I admitting you, Jeremy, to this meeting? It says admit you, because Tim's in here?
Yes, please.
All right, Tim, can you hear me? Oh, maybe I should get rid of, can I turn the sound on, Jeremy?
Uh, yes, please.
All right, Tim, can you hear me?
Why don't you just go ahead and play his recording?
Play his recording. Okay. So, we have to be creative for the elementary plan, and that's typical of the elementary level. Tim is joining us somewhere in Nevada, and can't really hear him. So, we'll pull up a recording.
All right, Tim, can you hear me?
Getting better. Tim, can you turn down your speaker?
Okay. So, we have to be.
That's not going to work. There's a delay, Tim. All right. Well, while we troubleshoot, we do have a backup plan ready. So, Tim pre-recorded his K-1 portions. He was hoping to also be live to answer questions that come in. So, I know he's here in spirit to cheer us on through this really difficult conversation. One of my biggest goals for tonight was not to cry, and so, that already happened, and Kevin sharing something that's really important that before we move forward, we really address. And that is, that goes to my next slide, of it is an insurmountable task of what we're being asked to do. And I just want to think, and I can't even cry in the mask or talk in the mask, which makes this even more difficult in thinking our planning, but our staff and our parents and our community have come together with finding solutions to problems that seem to have no solution. So, I went rogue already, Tim. This is at the end of the presentation. It needs to be put at the beginning, too. Teachers have given up their summers. Administration has been on-call from Nevada at all hours of day and night. We have read through every single comment that a parent has submitted in that survey of over five hundred comments, every phone call, every, I see you in the grocery store at a distance, and you waved me over to give me some insights. We take that all into account as we plan. So, moving forward, as we present this in-person model, on the other side of the coin is remote learning. And so, we are ready to tackle both, and that's what I admire most about our staff, is they want to teach, whether it's remote or in-person. They care, we care, and we want our kids to learn. So, with that said, and as Tim is, or someone is chatting me, we will present our in-person models that have shifted as of Thursday and Friday of last week. So, at 7:59, this is where we're at today. All right. So, when we first talked about ISB guidelines and what was required in terms of social distancing, it was really important that we had the conversation about what are we able to do. Simply put, Miller has been at capacity for the past couple of years, and they are simply bursting at the seams. So, when we've talked about equitable opportunities for all of our kids in terms of small class sizes, even if we start remote and come back, we had to talk about logistically, how could we make that work cohesively and as a team? So, with that, we talked about housing our kindergarten and first-grade students at Miller with the space to build capacity if needed. And Manning, which is a much bigger structure altogether, can house second, third, fourth, and fifth-grade students. That includes dual language within the grade level. It's really important that we work together as a grade-level team through all of this. There are some benefits that really help our teachers in this process, just to think of the need to, I think we're at four times, pivot from remote and in-person and back again. So, that is really important when we talk about learning during this time. So, with those benefits, we also have to think about what we must prepare for. So, please know that administration, teachers, and parents have shared that there are certain groups of students that are listed up here that we'll have, that we have to proactively plan for, to make sure that we welcome them, that they feel supported in a transition when we're talking about a potential building move in person. We also have spent a lot of time, we'll talk about it a little bit later, about potential drop-off and pickup routes. There are a lot of logistic pieces that come into play for this. There's also been a question of, is this a short-term or long-term? And as we stated in our memo a couple of weeks ago, when we made this decision, we really look at, we're in the right now, but we also know that there are some long-term impacts that we need to discuss and monitor as well. Tim, am I doing okay? I won't know. Okay. So, some important terms just to think about as we're going through, and this is a question that came up a lot for parents. We thought it was important to define these terms. Homeschooling is an option that families have, where they disenroll the students from the school, and then they are responsible with the DuPage Regional Office to design and implement instruction. Parents were really concerned, and teachers as well, as if they did not want to send their kids in person, that homeschooling would be the only other option. And so, we talk about a potential option, which needs to be flushed out with logistical pieces of knowing who would potentially be in person or not, of a virtual academy. So, people have already started asking, what is the difference between virtual academy and remote learning? And it is simply this. If we provide in-school experiences for kids, and parents feel that the safety of the student is not best, and they would like to continue at home, and we have in-person learning, we are looking at potential options for a virtual academy. Now, we might all be forced, or we might all choose to be in remote learning, and that, then, we will pivot and turn with that as we need to. But if we are doing in-person, that virtual academy is an option for families. The next thing we talk about that really comes in, both with in-person and with remote learning, is even if we're in-person, our classrooms are completely different. As Linda was talking about centers, kids gathering around, rotations, those things are not going to be possible as we come back into the classroom, and we have many plans to be inviting and show kids what that looks like before they enter the doors. But the realistic nature is, we will have to do both of those types of learning, whether we are in-person or at home. The last piece is blended learning, which we'll talk about with the model that we're going to share today, which is a hybrid of a mix of in-person and then remote as well, to make sure that we have those five instructional hours. Next, sorry, I was just checking to make sure Tim was not texting me. So, here are the two models of in-person that we just want to talk about. And as of last Thursday, I think we were in the middle, option of having full day ready to go, which we do have the capability in terms of space. But as we started, as I cannot breathe in this mask right now, because I'm extremely excited and anxious to present, but kids wearing masks for a full day can be a challenge, and how do we get around that and make sure that kids are still engaged in learning? A big issue with us was talking about lunch, and how does that look even if we have it at a social distance? And so, with that conversation and parent input, along with teacher input, we really evolved collectively at a half-day hybrid. With that half-day hybrid, we have the option for the virtual academy. So, those are the options that we are going to discuss. All right. See if I can do this.
Good evening, school board. This is Tim Wyler, principal of Miller Elementary School, joining you in a recorded session to talk about how the elementary schools can reopen in the fall of 2020. I would like to now summarize plans for the K-1 building at Miller School. In our safest in-person learning plan, it would allow families to have students attend school half-day in the morning, and then continue with their academics in the afternoon or evening in a remote learning format. If we attended school for half of a day, we will welcome Manning School and the Junior High on accessing bus for our students that would be a ride to and from school. Our school day in theory would start either fifteen minutes before or after the second through fifth. At 8:00 AM, Miller would start the day either at 7:45 or 8:15. We would plan for a minimum of a three-hour in-school learning day, followed by a two-hour remote learning experience. If we go to a four-hour in-school learning day, then it would be followed up by a one-hour remote learning experience. For students receiving special education services and resource minutes, we would look for by in-school and remote learning times that are available for each student based on their goals. And we would have no breakfast or lunch eaten at school. Families will have breakfast and lunch sent home if they participate in the food service program. An example would be if we started school on.
Because the teachers who are taking their time to watch a disc say they cannot hear it at home. So, I'm going to summarize again, if that's okay, because I just feel like it's really important to hear these things as best I can. So, I'm hoping everyone can hear me now. So, I will try to summarize, and I apologize. We're moving to Plan C. I think the big things are that half-day for Miller and Manning will look very similar. We work in tandem, though, in terms of staggered starts and staggered ends to allow for busing. So, when we talk about potentially a three-to-four-hour school day, that would be in tandem with the second through fifth. To review what the in-person would look like, we're talking about getting our in-person core instruction in those three to four hours, which would include special education services Linda alluded to, and we all feel that in-person, when possible, is the absolute best. So, being creative in times that we can service those minutes. There will be no breakfast or lunch that's eaten in school. We're working with our food service department in ways that we can administer efficiently meals for families as they leave the door, to have lunch and breakfast for the next day available to go in their backpacks at home. Then, the question comes, what about when they're on the bus? Those are pieces that we will definitely address as a part of our logistical things to check off and make sure we've made sure there's a plan and a protocol for. Weekly schedule, and I think this is something that we talked about, showing a visual to our families of what the classroom spaces look like, that at the lower levels of K-2, there are predominantly smaller classes, and then just also thinking developmentally of those students. So, we're talking about classroom sizes of approximately fourteen. These are all worst-case scenarios with the idea, when I say worst-case, that was probably not the best term, but assuming that zero percent of families choose a remote or homeschooling option. So, we want to plan in terms of having everyone in, so that we can make sure our spaces are appropriate for those guidelines, knowing that those numbers will potentially go down. We also have a plan, or are developing a plan with our teachers and staff about what the afternoon remote section would look like. And we talk about being, or offering the availability of specials to be done virtually, specialists to have their time be given virtually, so that we can contain all of our core instruction, our most essential standards for in-person learning. A full day, and please know that a transition from half-day to full day is not overnight, as we've talked about before, that we need to ease ourselves into that to make sure our protocols can be met. But we're looking at a full day of still grade-level centers. We're looking at that for the course of this school year. A start-and-end turn that once again collaborates with Manning's building, as we always have, offering the half-day option for kindergarten students. Once again, very similar, it's going to be self-contained classrooms with fourteen or fewer students, separated by a minimum of six feet, and students would be required to wear face masks. So, I don't want to be too repetitive for the second through fifth grade, so I'm just going to touch on things that may look a little bit different or not mentioned before. In that four-hour span, we know that kids simply don't sit still for ten minutes oftentimes, and knowing that teachers will need those breaks as well, as I can already see myself needing one. So, we plan on using outdoor spaces, it's true. We plan on using outdoor spaces in a very structured way to allow for, as Linda was saying, mask breaks, but also just a time for a mental break. And I think that the tools that we have already received from mindful practices and will continue to embed in our practice will help us to support that instructional area of social social-emotional learning. For fourth and fifth-grade students, we are looking at having two teachers. So Manning currently has a model where there are three teachers per grade. Miller has a model that there are two. And so we are looking at having two teachers divide a cohort. And so rather than a teacher, for at least for Manning, rather than a student having three teachers, they would now have two. So in terms of wrapping our arms instructionally around every single student to make sure that they're supported, that helps the teachers to focus. On the parent and student side, we know that as still young learners, managing all of those teachers and the expectations can be tricky. So we're trying to find the best balance, knowing that fourth and fifth grade is all of our grades, but definitely in fourth and fifth gets to some rigorous content. As we move to a more full-day structure, we allowed for a master schedule potentially that would provide time for two specials each day along with a lunch break. And the reason we thought about that plan is knowing that once we enter the building, we're not going back to centers and group activities and turn and talk to your neighbor. So scheduling the day to make sure that we have built-in breaks from the master schedule is really important. So if you look at the bottom, it's a second-grade schedule. Within those green times is academic time. Now, teachers know their kids best of when a break is needed or when an activity maybe needs a pause so that we can reset. So within their time, there's a lot of flexibility. But from an administrative perspective and thinking of the whole building, we want to make sure that we're providing breaks throughout the day. Virtual academy is something that we talked a little bit about at the beginning, and it's something that's really in development because we have to, it's all, you know, you need one thing in order to plan another. We need to know how many families would want this opportunity and what it could look like. So this is in the process. Here are some things that are automatic that we know. We have many curriculum resources that are online that students would have access to. Our next piece in looking at how do we develop this is looking at certified teachers and models and using other districts. We do not make this alone, and we definitely lean on what other districts are doing for ideas and inspiration. So we will continue to plan this, but even having this option is based off of feedback from both teachers and parents. Remote learning, I feel like Nadine had a lot more specific than where we're at right now. I think that our subgroup focused a lot on if we had to do in-person, what does that look like first? Our next task, which teachers are eager to do in some respects of like, what does remote look like? We plan on not just using the guidance of ISB, but I will say from the second we started pandemic teaching, our teachers were thinking about how can they improve? What can they do to build their capacity? How can they work as a team? I know teachers are sharing a bunch of ideas of their own planning over the summer and ways to improve. So and of course, there's going to be comments from the public that share their thoughts and feelings, but I know our teachers best, and I know that given this task, not only do they want to meet this, but they want to exceed it, and it will absolutely happen. I think the biggest pieces for us are how, what do five hours of instruction look like? And how do we do that in a meaningful way? So those are things that we want to set clear guidelines for teachers so that parents know what to expect, teachers know what to plan for, and students have accountability too. So those are our next pieces for remote planning. Back to some logistical things to consider if in-person. We've already started planning for multiple doors that will be used for entry and exit and cohorts that will use them, stairwells and bathrooms being marked for specific groups with clear up and down or only a grade level accessing. I never thought I would be lucky, but our vestibules that we have for a double door, which sometimes make it very unwelcoming for parents who don't know how to navigate the building, especially at Manning, the office is tricky. But it also gives us an extra added safety as we're going to ask them to remain in vestibules as much as possible for pickup and drop-off. We have protocols that we are building in place for any visitor that needs to come in, and if they're entering the building beyond that vestibule, having some temperature checks to make sure that anyone who does have to enter the building does so in a safe manner. Obviously, those are things that we want to limit upfront. And then our last big thing that we're talking about and we're working closely with the business office is looking at busing options. We talked about it briefly with our parent group to give their opinion. There's pros and cons to both models, and then cost comes into it as well. But thinking about, do we have Manning and Miller-specific buses, which pose some benefits and then challenges? And then obviously, the option of families riding together is something that potentially could be feasible, but it does mean that one group is going to potentially stay on the bus longer than the other. So these are options that we are exploring. So once again, I'll say it because it's really important to my colleagues and to the teachers who've dedicated their time, to the parents who take the time to write the emails and take a risk in sharing their opinion, which is absolutely valued. This is a collaborative effort that will, as of 8:19, probably shift again, but we're ready for it. And with the feelings and emotions, it's important because that shows the passion we have for our kids. Tim's on. All right, Tim's on to answer questions. Hey!
Hello. Thank you so much. Perfect timing, Jeremy and Nadine. Thank you.
All right, specific questions for elementary at this time?
Obviously, virtual might be very helpful to some parents. So I'm wondering, when we talk about virtual, is it actually going to be live in the classroom? So, you know, or would that be a possibility that the teacher might be live somehow in the classroom via their smartboard or some other device while the students are there? I mean, I know Kevin had talked a little bit about that. Is that any part of this, of this virtual plan?
I think I can answer, and then hopefully you can chime in. There are a lot of confidentiality pieces with that live syncing into a classroom. And then we also have to think about the teacher and their comfort level. But I think most importantly is we're thinking of if it can't be live in that format, can we potentially utilize staff in all of the factors that we have to consider? Can we have staff that is specifically assigned to virtual academies? So live instruction would happen, but it would be in parallel with, let's say it's a third-grade classroom, that third-grade classroom instruction. I'm speaking hypothetically right now. But it would not be live into the classroom. And that goes back to that piece of needing grade-level collaboration so that any virtual options that we can provide can be as in sync as possible with what's actually occurring in person.
Right, because I was really most concerned with, you know, when you're in a classroom and you've got 10, 15 students in there, you do learn off the other students' questions.
Absolutely.
That's why I was wondering if we were going to be able to do some type of simultaneous or, like I say, virtual like that. So I can also understand the privacy and security issues. So hopefully that can be worked out.
The great thing about technology is there's so much online collaboration that can do it, be done in addition to that. And so that's what we have to work through of how can we bring those two together? So there can be collaboration with peers in some way through Google chats that are, you know, that are monitored. Even just Google by nature is a collaborative platform. Same with Otis. Otis for us does that as well, but I was thinking more of the Google.
So thank you, Lindsay and Tim, for the presentation. I just, as it relates to the teachers and potentially there being some in-classroom instruction and some virtual, do you have a feel from your teachers what their comfort level is with coming back into the classroom? And just can you talk about that a little bit as you've discussed these?
I think that every teacher wants to be in class as much as they can. So that I want to say upfront. When we start to think and hear on the news and think about all these factors and we get beyond the passion for teaching, I think there is a legitimate concern. We've sent out a survey to get some feedback, so I know Kevin's going to share some more information. And so I think that will answer it a little bit better because he has updated numbers.
Yep. And then with the five-day-a-week instruction for in-person, whether it's the till noon option or the full-day option, is there a deep cleaning protocol in place for that? Would that be like a midweek in the evening? Like, how would that work?
I think those are some of the pieces we started to talk through. When you're talking about now, it's a little bit different because our rooms are self-contained. So we're not switching spaces. Kids are staying in the same locations, and teachers are either zooming in or coming to them. So in terms of kids cross-contaminating, that can be kept at a better minimum. But we have talked about what does cleaning look like at the end of the day for all classrooms?
Okay. And this is going to sound like a trivial thing, but I know we're talking about lunch outside of school. I know with my child, as she went through elementary, that morning snack break was critical to her maintaining her ability to focus in school for those first four hours of the day. Is that something you guys have considered? And or are you, is that sort of like, we'll deal with that once we get past step one?
All right, we're still at step one. I think it's definitely a consideration of how long can kids endure actively and in an engaging way? So we can definitely come up with plans to be outside, and that I saw across the street of Manning now offers an amazing blank space to provide some options for kids, but when it rains, then what? So I think those are some things. We don't mean to poke holes. We're really trying to be logistical in our thinking of what does, you know, that's why we said three hours versus four hours. We know this is a huge disadvantage. I'm in that boat of a working parent that needs to rethink things completely. So that's something to keep in mind, but when we're talking about safety, that's first and foremost.
And then the sort of, you know, huge question is, what is the catalyst for a decision as to which option we might be moving forward with in the fall? And I understand things are changing on a daily basis, and it's past 8:19, so you haven't had to change your presentation yet. But are there certain triggers that you are waiting for from the Department of Health or DuPage County or whoever it might be that are going to help you kind of land on which option we might move forward with? And then when do you think we might be there? I know it's an impossible scenario, but just, you know, I'm asking the question that's on every parent's mind.
Yeah, our option right now is half-day and remote. And that is a decision that we make collectively, us as an elementary. And I will say this, the little kids, like Linda was saying, the in-person is so crucial, that safety piece is, so Kevin's kind of coming up here to maybe help me out.
So can I clarify what you just said, though? Your option is half-day and remote or virtual?
Half-day and remote. Virtual only comes into play if there is an in-person model and families do not feel comfortable sending their kids to school.
Okay, so those are the two options that are on the table right now. Okay.
Laura, to catch, when all the buildings present, I'm going to kind of wrap it up, and we'll talk about what those next steps look like and ultimately how we bring this in for a landing. Because it won't be individual buildings, but it'll be as a district how we...
Okay, okay. Just so that parents know as they're listening to the options, that they're going to hear about what the next steps are. Okay. Fantastic.
Half-day or remote? What's the full-day option?
Full-day would be a transition too. So some of our biggest concerns when we started with the full-day were the duration of kids wearing masks and then also those eating periods that we've built in a snack both at Manning and Miller and then also that lunch period. As soon as our masks are taken down, even if it's six feet apart, that, to us, we're talking about losing that validity. So in reaching out for answers to, okay, what does that mean then if a student then is testing positive and our masks have been down? So that's where we really made a shift with some creative ideas from parents and teachers of, I don't want to say avoiding that, but really being as safe as possible. And then there's an allergy component that we have to address. We have students with severe allergies, and what does that look like at the younger age in containing that?
So full-day is not, we're not talking about full-day for...
To start.
To start in the fall?
Correct. Unless Tim and I...
No, full-day is, we just wanted to make sure we're clear in terms of a transition plan if we ever get to stage five or a vaccine sometime this year. We would like to have some thought into what the transition looks like. It's obviously not going to happen overnight. It's going to be over at least a week or two time period or maybe even longer, depending on, you know, everyone's input on how long would it take us to move from remote to a half-day, from half-day to a full-day, from full-day with some, you know, with some things that we have to put in place to traditional, how we started last school year in school. Because our full-day presentation today is not similar to what a traditional start of the school year looked like in 2019 when we started in August. So even that is another layer of planning and supports that we need to put in place to talk about transitioning from full-day during stage four or level four of the Illinois governor's plan to stage five, and we're back to kind of business as normal.
Thank you, Lindsay.
Well, I had one more, just quick question. It revolves more around the dual-language program. I know that when you enter the dual-language program, you make the agreement it's K through fifth. Okay? Well, what happens now if you decide you want to do remote learning with your child? Are you going to lose your spot if you come back next year?
I know the answer because Tim and I have talked about it, but Tim, did you hear that question clearly?
Yes, yes, thank you, Gary. Do you want me to answer it?
Yes.
Yes. So as of right now, we are anticipating that we'll have a balanced level of teaching and support staff, whether parents choose remote learning or in-school learning, if that's the direction that we take. We anticipate that every student that's in dual-language, as of the start of the school year, will continue to hold on to their spot as long as they're meeting the requirements for the day-to-day instruction, whether it's in the remote basis, in the academy, or in The only time that would possibly become an issue, and we haven't really thought about it, is if a student disenrolled from the district, which means they are providing their own students with, you know, either a private school option or a homeschooling option, and then they would come back into the district depending on that timeframe. That's the only, that's the only scenario we really haven't discussed yet in detail. But as long as they stay a part of the CSD 201 curriculum, materials, remote or in-person, they would hang on to their spot. That's the thought process behind what Ms. Petersak and I have discussed.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, thank you all for having us. To start off, it's nice to go a little bit later because a lot of the answers, a lot of, you know, the framework has been out there. We're just talking about particulars at Westmont Junior High, which Amy and I are very excited to be here about. So as we look at these different obstacles, these different challenges, we have asked a lot of our teachers, a lot of our parents, a lot of our students, we've put out a lot of surveys to get a lot of information. And we know that there's a lot of surveys that are going out, and we really appreciate all the feedback we're getting. Those surveys are extremely important from all the different stakeholders because they're informing what we're going to be doing on our end. So thank you for all of that. So you know about the background. There's a lot that are on these slides. They're very full slides, totally what you should not do when you're doing a slideshow. But I know that a lot of individuals out there in the community are going to be looking for as much information as possible regarding this. And the reality is, this is going to be a short introduction of what school could look like at Westmont Junior High School. We want you to go back and see the background, see why we're making these decisions, what our criteria was, where we got our guidance, and then what we decided to go with. And so there's background and purpose. I'm not going to read it to you. Additionally, parents, teachers, students even, I know you're out there watching this, you can click on this link and you can see the ISB guidance. So this is where we're getting our requirements. This is what's telling us what we need to be doing in schools right now. So whether it's through the Illinois Department of Public Health or through ISB, this is where, these are our guiding documents that we're looking at. Now you've got access to it. Some more of our recommendations. I think one of the key recommendations, I heard Mrs. Coyle talking about or asking a question about it before. a question about it before, is our most at-risk students, our students that that maybe are at risk academically or because of language or for whatever reason. And so one of the building blocks that ISB made very clear to us is that we needed to look at those students first and and make sure that their needs are being met as as all students are, but specifically those students that are already at risk. And so you're going to see that that is one of, besides safety, right, I mean, besides safety, which is the number one thing, one of our building blocks for our entire plan is based on meeting the needs of our students that are already at risk. That was crucial to us. And so, once again, not reading the entire thing, but that's some more of our guidelines. So how did we go about making our decision? We took all of this information, including the information that we're receiving from our families, all of the guidelines, the safety information, and as you've heard a few times, that's the the information is changing as of what time is it? And so we're taking all of this information, we're synthesizing it basically into what our plan is, in which we worked with our subcommittee on as well. And so our subcommittee was made up of students, awesome students, parents, WTA member, WASPA, deaf and hard of hearing. We all came together in the beginning of July, came together again today. They've already seen this presentation, but they got a lot more detail. They, we dove into it. As a reminder to those watching at home and to the Board of Education, besides this PowerPoint presentation, you also have a document that is about six pages long that dives a little bit deeper into what we're going to be presenting today. And so if I'm talking too fast, just take a look at that document, please. And so the the group, we ended up looking at two different return-to-school in-person plans. And so Plan A is a blended hybrid model, so we call it blended, in which the student body is going to attend in-person each morning, one-half in the morning, one-half in the afternoon. And that's going to be Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, Fridays. On Wednesdays, it is going to be a remote planning day for for all, or a remote learning day for all. And that's going to also be that deep cleaning day that we're looking towards. Plan B was a blended hybrid learning model in which the students were attending in-person full days. So students, one-half of the school was on Monday, Day A, and one-half was in in school, half, half, or I'm sorry, full day, Day B, which is Tuesday. And then in the flip-flopping, so when you're not in school full-time, you've got remote learning going on at home. Okay? Wednesday was still going to be a deep cleaning, then Thursday and Friday, A-B. So after looking at all of the plans, after hearing feedback from our parents, from our students, from our teachers in some cases, and then also looking at the specific things that make up the psyche, the amazing psyche of our middle schoolers, the social-emotional concerns, the accountability concerns, also, once again, going back to that at-risk population that we were talking about before, we looked at it all. And so after careful consideration, Plan A is what we're going to be presenting to you today. And then as a reminder, that Plan A is going to be a part-time, part of the day is Group A, part of the day is Group B. And so all together, we're going to have all of our students in-person, and I'll go for it and explain a little bit about that. But as you see with the criteria, there is a lot that we kept in mind when we were building this plan. Safety was the number one thing. And and I'm not going to get teary-eyed because I already did once tonight, believe it or not. But but I mean, there is a significant amount of time and stress and, and, you know, and blood, sweat, and tears that is that is going with these plans. And so whether we start remote, whether we start in-person, just know that safety, safety, safety is the most important thing to us. And so, safety, safety, safety. These are some of the ways that we are mitigating some of the risks that are in the in-person instruction. And so the screening and temperature checks, I think Mr. Carey has gone into that a little bit already, social distancing, the desk and the equipment being disinfected, we'll talk about that a little bit. You'll see that we have nine classrooms that are set up for Group A students on one side of the building and nine classrooms on the other side of the building for that other afternoon group of students that are going to be coming to Westmont Junior High School. So there are a few common classrooms. We'll go into that in a little bit and we'll talk about how we are going to be disinfecting those appropriately as well. Hallways and lockers, or I'm sorry, lockers specifically, we are not going to be utilizing the lockers. The kids are going to be having their bags. The masks are mandatory. We are putting together different criteria, but it is very clear that we're not messing around when it comes to this. Where we tend to take a really kind of like take kids under our wing when they're making some poor choices, this is one of those things that this is jeopardizing everybody's health and safety. We're not going to be messing around with this one. And so the hand sanitizer. Additionally, we've got bathroom breaks. It looks like our middle schoolers, our junior hires are going to go back to the elementary school because we're probably going to have bathroom breaks. It's probably the safest way to utilize the bathroom, so we'll be looking at that. And then let's see here, water fountains are not going to be operational, but the fill stations will be, so students can bring in their water bottles and we'll still have a solid approach there. And then lunch and breakfast, similar to what one of the plans is over the elementary school, is going to be provided as either students are leaving that day or as they're coming to school. I'm working with Francesca from Food Service on Thursday to continue on with that plan. And so so we'll have a little bit more information for that. And that's similar to what Tim was talking about, whether it was recorded or live, I forget, about how anybody that's part of that school program, the lunch program, will have access to it. That's not going away. So let's talk about transportation. Q, do you want to handle this one?
Yeah, sure. So in years past, we typically had six buses for our routes, but this year, under this plan, we are, thank you, we are expecting to have three buses. So we're going to go from six to three, which are going to be used four times a day with extended routes. So we've already talked to Westway, this works for them. What we're thinking is, and these times might be a little off, but Group A in the morning would be dropped off at the junior high at 8:00 a.m. We would then have the temperature checks as they come off the bus, they would go into the school and then into their classrooms. Drop-off at WJHS for Group B would then be at 11:25. We would have pickup for Group A at 11:42. This is going to give us time to have the buses switched out, cleaned, all that good stuff. And then picked up for Group B is going to be at 3:05.
One of the things in regards to the drop-off of the students, we're going to have three different locations in which the students are going to be coming into the school. So there's going to be the, the commons area is one of those locations, and then we're going to be cutting the gym, gymnasium in half, and one group's coming in to one half and one group's coming into the other half. So we're trying to make sure we've got approximately somewhere between 87 to 95 students per grade level. So we believe that that's going to be breaking down, really. Later on, you'll see two class sizes, some were ranging from 12 to 16 in classes. We'll, we'll show you a little bit more about that. So you've heard a little bit about blended day and remote and full remote learning. Whether we start the the school year full remote learning and then go to our blended model when the time is right, and then if we need to go back to remote learning, these are all the transition plans we are, we're working on, or whether we start blended day, we are at least going to have one day, Wednesday, be a full, a remote learning day. So that is something we are putting a lot of emphasis on. We are going to be providing you information today about that blended model. And that blended model, once again, is going to be that hybrid. So hybrid and blended are usually used in the same context. And and so we're going to, we're going to show you what that looks like. So as I said, nine classrooms on one side of the building that would house the morning or Group A students. And in almost all cases, except for maybe exploratory or in small group instruction, when we're pulling those students that are, that have IEPs, that are, have English as a second language needs, or that are in the dual-language program, they are going to be staying in those classes. So similar to what an elementary classroom would look like, the teachers are rotating, it is the students that would be maintained or maintain themselves in that classroom. Okay? So essentially, there'd be no passing period. In the afternoon, the other nine classrooms are going to be used for that Group B, and that is going to minimize any kind of cross-contamination. We're going to be taking all the extra furniture because we're not going to be having a typical choir class anymore. So Mr. Troyer, I'm sorry if you're watching this, your classroom is going to be used for all that additional furniture that is really awesome when you're not in a pandemic. All right. So other logistics. Ms. Quatro?
Okay. So we're going to have all of the instruction taking place in that classroom, just like John had said, but exploratories will need to move because we have industrial arts classes, arts classes, chorus and band are going to look different. They won't be in the classrooms. We believe at this time that we would have band and chorus in the commons and in the gym outside as much as possible, but weather permitting, we would have to come inside. So we want them in larger spaces. We are also going to be able to maintain that six feet in all of our classrooms. We're going to show you in a little bit how we've broken that down. If you can imagine, we've broken the school right in half. We've cut it right in half. So the AM, I'm sorry, my mask is falling down, but the AM group will walk in and they'll use half the school. And then the PM group is going to come in and they're going to use the other half of the school. Teachers are going to move from class to class. The students are going to remain in their rooms. That was very important for us. Staff will be utilized to monitor the hallways and the bathrooms. We're working closely with our team leaders to talk about what that that supervision will look like and also what bathroom breaks will look like. And so the staff is going to help us develop that plan.
So so what you're seeing, what you're seeing right here is what the, on the left side is the AM schedule, on the right side is the PM schedule. And you'll see that there, there's going to be three, three groups per grade level on on the AM schedule. So I'm going to just identify right here, for an example, the sixth grade AM. So as you see, there's a room number that's associated with it, so the different rotations, and there's that capacity number. That means how many students we can put in there. And what Ms. Quatro and I ended up doing was going inside each classroom and separating the desk, taking a.
Tape measure.
Tape measure, thank you, and doing the the six feet all the way around. Additionally, with that, what we wanted to mention is if we're going to have somewhere between 43 to 48 students in the sixth grade in A, if we have a good breakdown, there's more students in sixth grade than there are in seventh and eighth grade. But if if we're going to be doing that, then what you're looking at is not using this full capacity. This is what full capacity is. We're not really going close to that in the majority of the classrooms, not even going close to it in the majority of the classrooms. So there is going to be plenty of space inside these classrooms, and and so we're going to keep moving from there. So what is, what does it look like? So students are going to be in-person learning for four days a week, three hours and 20 minutes each day. So there's going to be five periods a day at Westmont Junior High School. No lunches will be eaten at school. Students will, which is going to be important for many different reasons, because you just think that that lunch not being eaten in school is just, it's just like a blanket. Okay, it's just one less thing they got to do. But on top of that, that's going to be freeing up somewhere around two to two and a half hours for my custodian, who's going to be pretty darn busy when he's going around and he's taking care of the different rotations and going from place to place. Because we only have currently one daytime custodian. I know there's a reformatting of what that looks like, a restaffing, but that is Joe Smith's job, not my job. And so so next, the exploratory classes. We are trying to let parents know that exploratory classes may not be their students' first choice during the pandemic, and we may be varying from the traditional choices that we've had in the past. We've got to be creative. We're asking for a little patience in that way. Next, PE is going to take place outside of school. So it's not going to be that in-person instruction. It's going to be one of, as we've talked about, the ISB has five hours that make up an instructional day. So their 40-minute PE class is actually going to be part of that outside of the three hours and 20 minutes, that occurs outside of the school day.
So just to explain it a little bit more, if they are in the AM group, they would not have PE in school, then they would leave school, go home and do PE at home.
And if they are in the PM group, then they get to wake up and go run a few miles, right? Because that's what all teenagers do.
Right.
And and go from there. So teachers are going to, what's really important is, as you've heard a few of the other administrators talk about it today, is that this is unlike anything, I mean, we've heard that a few times, right? People haven't gone to school for that. So in order to support this blended model, in order to support the students that are already compromised and are unable to come to school and are doing remote learning full day and all of those sort of things, when we do go to this model, if we do go to this model, when we do go to this model, we need to make sure that those students are supported with teachers that are able to support them and have the time to do so. Additionally, we know in the state of Illinois, and specifically in the area of DuPage, that we have a shortage of substitute teachers. So we know we need to come up with flexibility within our plan to support our students, to support our teachers. When things happen, we need to be able to cover for one another. And so this plan is going to allow that to occur. So we talk about the teacher professional hours, and this is a beautiful paragraph that talks about instruction, but it it explains that the three hours and 20 minutes is made, what it is made up of, which you'll see in a moment with the schedule. The outside of the in-person instruction is located here, too. So Ms. Quatro, do you want to hit that?
So as I said before, PE is going to be 40 minutes. That's going to be at home. Literacy instruction is going to be continued at home, so they'll have about 40 minutes extra work once they get home or in the morning before they come to school. Math is also going to be an additional 20 minutes. And then social studies, science, that's going to, going to also be an extra 15 minutes. That will bring the entire school day to five hours and 15 minutes, which is actually over the 15-minute state requirement.
And the reason that we did that is that we we are aware there's going to be some transition times that occur, and so we wanted to make sure that it was just slightly above to to account for those kind of things if if there were some issues there. So what is our focus going to be? So we know that there's only so much time. We know that, and you're about to see it, that we're going to be having the the core content area classes. So that's literacy, math, science, and social studies, that that you're, the students are going to be receiving on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, in-person, literacy and literacy and math, and then science and social studies are going to switch off every day, right? So one day is science, one day is social studies. And so 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 the reason why we wanted to bring that up is the curriculum needs to be extremely focused under this pandemic, under this hybrid model blended learning. And so therefore, we wanted to make sure we communicated with you all and the community. The teachers have been working the last year and a half on drilling down this long list of standards into what are the essential standards that students need to know and understand, be able to do, and and to drill down on those to make sure that those are going to be the focus of this blended learning model, right? And so so that is where a lot of our professional development is located. That is where their concentration is going to be with their planning as well, regardless of what school looks like. And so additionally, we talked about what's really important of students this age. You'll see about our STAR resource time, and I'm going to, I'm going to wait to explain a little bit more as I show you the the draft of the schedule, and I think I covered that. So this is what the AM group schedule would look like, and the classes, the core content classes that you can see right here. So we're going to follow sixth grade again, those lucky sixth graders. They, these core content classes, what that signifies is that's either the science or social studies, or it's going to be the the math or literacy that's occurring right here for that first group. Second group is going to get whatever the other core content area is, third group, whatever's left, right? So so those classes are 40 minutes long. Now, what we needed to do, once again, going back to that at-risk group of students, we needed to make sure that that resource time was 50 minutes long to make sure we've got legal documents called IEPs that we had, have to make sure that we're following. And so resource time, by borrowing 10 minutes from exploratory class, resource time is able to be 50 minutes long. Now, when some students are getting that resource time or that extra help with ESL or other things that are needed, we have STAR, which is going to be tied to goal setting, tied to, that is when intervention for some of our students is going to take place. And then that's also when that social-emotional learning is going to occur that Nadine was talking about before. Besides the program, the mindfulness program, there's other programs that we have at Westmont Junior High School. And then as you see here, the afternoon is going to be just a little bit different than what the morning looked like, just really with the arrival time and dismissal. I don't think there's really anything to cover in this one. Okay. We've talked about this before. We've talked about this before, but we believed it needed to be a separate slide. That there's going to be a lot of focus on this group of students specifically. You want to go into this?
Sure. We definitely took into account what our parents said to us in the surveys. We also read all of the comments. We made sure to address their, their, their suggestions to us and some of their fears as well in this plan. So we. We came up with the top five issues that parents wanted us to address. They're here. And then we won't read it to you, but if you look further, we address all of those five questions. In how, and then also explain how it looks with our plan, Plan A.
We thought it's, we, we know that the why behind decisions is really important. And so we wanted to make sure that parents understood, we're, we're role parents. We wanted to make sure that parents understood as much as possible why we made the different decisions and how that's going to impact their, their concerns. And so those being exposure to COVID-19, the quality of remote learning. The emotional wellbeing, the erratic schedule. And then the academics behind, behind children or child. So we know that what we wanted to share, these are not, we're about to show this slide and one more slide. And, and these slides are, this is not what it's definitely going to be looking like. Looks like I used a poor color for that, for that font over there, the red. But, but we wanted to let parents know, one of the things that they're looking for is if and when we are in remote learning, we're definitely going to be there on Wednesdays, right? But at Westmont Junior High School, but if and when we are there. Then we wanted to show that there is going to be structure to the day. We're working with our teachers on that. We're actually getting some feedback from students on that as well in regards to what that is going to look like. We know that there's going to be some extra concentration in science and social studies because there's going to be some gaps there with our plan. But we, we want to really continue to work on that. Believe it or not, we didn't know that we would be able to even make this, make this schedule work up until about a week, week and a half ago, right? In regards to transportation, we didn't even know if it could happen. So we just kept working towards it. So we will be working, we've got our team leaders coming in and more impact from teachers. But this is, we are working on schedules so that parents know what they can expect from us. And speaking of expectations, we believe that this is another document that is available in board docs that's available to you. But we, we believe that it's important to have clear communication. And so having expectations and sharing those with students. Sharing what's expected of parents as much as possible. And then saying to parents, students, this is what you can expect from us at Westmont Junior High School, trying to, trying to sort that all out. And so in regards to next steps. One way or another, we're looking forward to school being school in August. And having some sort of interaction with our students, whatever that looks like. We, we ask that parents start thinking about what space. If there is a space inside the homes that the, the students can be doing that remote learning, so allow for some quiet time. I know that that can be difficult depending on, on the home situation. We are, we're, we're asking that you look, I know that the website is being updated. We'll continue to send out emails with different updates, so look for those. And then that last piece, I think is really important for all of us right now, the patience, positive, persistent, trying to work together. And now we wanted to open it up for questions.
I guess I need to be, I, I want to be clear on it, so maybe the community can be clear on it too. So when the students, so Group A comes in the morning, the afternoon, they're going to be doing remote learning or they're just supposed to be doing learning?
They're doing remote learning.
It is remote learning, okay. All right. I wasn't positive on that, that's why I wanted to make sure.
Absolutely. Great question. Thank you.
And I, I'm going to repeat something because it goes back to the question I asked earlier. What I heard you guys say, and I'm just making sure this is 100% correct. The morning students will be in different classrooms entirely than the afternoon students. And so the, the cleaning in between is less of an issue because you are utilizing different spaces.
Correct. And so I, I, I want to go a little bit deeper into that because that's a great question. So, so those, the, the group of eight, the, the morning students and the afternoon students. We're going to be utilizing nine classrooms for that morning set of students on one side of the building. And in the, the afternoon students, a different group of students are going to be using a different side of the building, nine different classrooms. The teachers are the ones that are moving from class to class. With the exception of exploratory. Any classes that may be utilized by an A group and a B group. We're talking about really small classes, like two or three students going into a special education teacher's classroom. The, we built into the schedule, and I worked with building and grounds to make sure that custodians could sanitize the area appropriately. We built into the schedule, there is an hour to an hour and fifty minutes, in some cases, three hours of separation between any kind of mixing. That only happens for, what do we have, Amy? Three classes, four classes? And it is, it is so few students and it's, it, there's so much of a break in between. It was not a concern at all in regards to having the amount of time for our custodians to take care of that.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Is our SACID programming still remaining for the school year?
Correct. So our deaf and hard of hearing program is still housed at Westmont Junior High School. As a matter of fact, we were very appreciative to have Ellen Gurkey, who is the administrator in charge of the program. We saw her today. We actually saw her supervisor yesterday. They're taking a look at everything. We're going to be having a meeting with Ellen on Thursday to go over a lot of her different questions. They are, they're talking about doing the full, full day program for the SACID. And what that looks like for us and how we're interacting with that. And so we're going to be working through all of those on, on Thursday. Thank you.
You know, I don't think we've asked this of anybody yet, but what about all the extracurricular, the clubs, the. Other involvement that the, that the students would normally get into? How are we going to be addressing any of that? And I guess more specifically, what about band and choir? How, how are we going to handle that?
Right. So, so different things are coming out regularly about band and choir. At least we're hearing things we've got to research a little bit more. We, we have a few different options that we're, that we're playing with right now in regards to what is going to be the safest, safest. And, and by the way, I've got to just say that our, our Westmont Junior High School PTO is contacting us, saying, how can we support you? Do you need this? Do you need that? And they're just, they're amazing. So shout out to the Westmont Junior PTO. But we are looking, we, we're looking at keeping in mind that if we have twenty, let's just say we have twenty-six seventh graders in the band typically, okay? Half of them are, are going to be in the AM, half of them in the PM. We have an entire gymnasium that is available. If we want to attempt to do that. I don't know if that's what we're looking for right now. We're also looking into the possibility of tents. We're also looking at the possibility of, as we mentioned. Band may look different, different for, for next, or for this, this time period, right? If we determine that it is unsafe, and by we, I mean, if the experts out there are determining that it is unsafe. Then we're going to cover it down. Now Thursday, it sounds like I have a busy day Thursday, but I really don't. Thursday, I'm meeting with my PLN. We've been meeting on a weekly basis. With administrators across DuPage, West Cook County, and then a little bit into King County. And, and the principals have been meeting and talking about their plans, what they're doing, how they're handling these different things, like these questions you're asking me. And, and so we're trying to make the very best decisions based on what we're hearing from science and from other educators across the, across the region, right? Did I answer your question though?
I was wondering about all the other extracurricular clubs.
So, so I, I guess I can announce, and that's, it's not in here, but it happened more recently. The SDEAA, which is our conference in regards to athletics, Southern DuPage. They, they have voted, the Board of Governors voted to, to suspend, to not have the fall athletics for the fall at least. So fall athletics are canceled. This is the first time I'm making that announcement. And so my coaches are unaware of that and my athletic director was just learning that in the last day or so. In regards to the extracurricular clubs and those sort of things. Mr. Carey is working with the WTA in regards to if you have a club and you believe that you have, and you have a plan in place. That your group can meet and not just meet and hang out and say hi to each other on Zoom, but have a solid plan in place. Then, then we're going to see about making those clubs be able to continue, but it's probably going to be remote. Right now, that because we have an A and a B day and all of that, the transportation issues, the activity buses, all those things. They just, we just want to do, we try, want to try to get this right before we start diving into extracurriculars.
Well, I really appreciate the, the Plan A over the other option. I just think it provides more continuity. To go full steam with two full days and then have all that time off, I think is just a roller coaster ride for students. So I like that option. I, I hope, I mean, my hope would be we're able to have in-person school. At least at the very beginning of the school year. I mean, everyone, and we're talking about having a, a second wave at some point. Hopefully that would be later in the fall if that happens, but. Getting the school year started, getting the students acclimated, getting the staff acclimated to all of this new. I think is really essential for a successful year, no matter how it plays out down the road, if we have to go full remote. But to try and go full remote right at the very beginning. I think students, parents are, are going to be lost. So I'm hoping that, that that's how this will, this will come about.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I, and I, what I want to say is that for Westmont Junior High School, for this age group of students. That is why Group A made more sense because of that middle level, it, it made a lot of sense for us. But thank you.
So I, thank you for your presentation. I'm going to ask this question of everybody, so Jack, you can be prepared for it too when it comes. But we've talked about the teachers in every scenario. I know you said teachers had input on your plan. Can you speak to the teachers' input on in-person learning for the junior high?
So I'm not broken down the, the data in regard to what Mr. Carey's survey that had gone out. So I, I can, I only know the, the entire district more so. And I didn't, as I know that a lot of people are getting, a lot of our, our stakeholders are getting a lot of surveys. I'm trying to be cognizant of how many surveys they're getting. And so, so we don't know specifically. We sent everything out to, we talked to our team leaders today. We sent out a video to our staff today with the plan and all of that. I, I would echo what Ms. Petersak said a little bit. I, I think that. When you talk about the unknown and, and you, and, and you know, we've been living the way that we've been, been living for a while, there is going to be. A level of apprehension, a level of concern, a lot, level of worry. And I'm not trying to downgrade it at all, right? I mean, it's just, you know, that, that, that there's that, there's that. So I think that that's there. I think that the, before the staff, before Westmont Junior High School staff. Received our plan, that their level may have been up here. And I think that as they started hearing a little bit more about the plan and how, how we're trying to, to really. Care for them as we would care for our brother or our sister or, you know, whatever that relationship looks like. I, I believe that it lessened.
Yeah.
But I, that's my gut. I, my gut could be completely off.
Yep.
So.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Five minutes, Jack. You may be surprised, Gary. You may be pleasantly surprised.
Three minutes?
Because my pal, he does a great job of going over the protocols. I don't have to go over all those again. If Jeremy's just good. So there is, this was distributed to the board and to Superintendent Carey. And to all of our staff and faculty. It's a twenty-page document. If anybody in the public wanted access to this. Our parent committee members have this too, but you can email me at jbalderman@cusd201.org and I could. Share this with you. It's a twenty-page document. I don't plan on going over it right now. I do want to begin with a few quick statements around the whole philosophy and how we're proceeding. First of all, a big thanks to the Board of Education. You're putting in a tremendous amount of time and effort and energy, and I know how sincerely you take this work. And there are people who are passionate on complete opposite ends of the spectrum on this decision. So you're not going to get applause from everybody for whatever decision you make, no matter how carefully and thoughtfully you make it. And you're getting paid nothing to do this work. So I like what Nadine said earlier about giving us some grace as we transition. Because inevitably, some of this learning is going to be remote. I hope that, I like that term. I hope our community is gracious with. Our board too, because I know that you're sincere people who have the, you know, thoughts of our teachers and our staff. And our kids and the whole community at heart. So best of luck to you on what's really a very challenging decision here. I will say that I think we're prepared either direction. If we're in-person learning, our staff and students are going to do a great job. And if we have to start remotely, they will also do a great job. A lot of people have talked, taken a few shots at the remote learning that's been done. We just got the feedback from our advanced placement exams where almost seventy percent of our kids participate. The best in the school's history and not by a small margin, the best pass rate, the most tests ever passed. And we were ranked number one in Illinois for regular high schools for inclusion. And at the same time, our pass rate was significantly higher than the national pass rate. That's just not being done anywhere else. And that was done in part through remote learning. So we didn't take our foot off the gas pedal at the end there. And I'm not saying it's the same quality. Nobody can pretend that it is. But I really do, there's evidence. When I have an opinion, I like to have evidence to back it up. And the evidence says that our teachers and, and our students did an exceptional job during remote learning. And there's a lot of mountain of evidence to back that up. Okay, so either way we go. You've heard the protocols. We're going to take into the Illinois, you know, Department of Public Health and the CDC guidelines and to everything we've done. We had a very large staff committee with some parents involved in this decision-making process. We started off in one direction and that's pretty much this remote, the reopening in-person and remote hybrid. And as new information came about, there was a pretty significant pushback from members of the committee. Who of course would prefer being in-person, but to be honest and represent what they truly gave to us. Said that they had larger concerns and were pushing towards remote learning. I want to thank on our subcommittee, we had a subcommittee. And I need to mention these people because they've done outstanding work and no matter what happens, we're going to use their work. Whether we're in-person, you know, and remote, or whether we're remote. And we anticipate that sometime we may have to go to that, no doubt. But we will absolutely be remote at some point. So Sue Ellen Jacobs and Nate Chamberlain and Brian Dunn and Madame Anselako and Lisa Hoopman and Laura Pagani and Kathleen Pletcher and Judy Van Ern. And Larissa Zalisco were on that subcommittee and put together the document you have that's very well thought out. And as like others have mentioned, the remote learning that we're talking about is not the same remote learning we did in the springtime. It's going to be of better quality because we've learned and we're learners. And so we've outlined some of those things. So let me just go over very briefly on that summary page, the two different options that we have. And as I said, I think we're prepared for excellence, no matter what direction we go in. But we have to manage expectations. We all know that. This is what we're faced with, but we will persevere and prevail. So the combination of in-person and remote learning, so the idea is if you're following on that first summary page. Half the students in the building at one time. And then the other half will be doing remote learning at home. And then the other students would come in the second day. And we have provided a detailed schedule of what that would look like. But let's say a typical week. So the A group would come in on Monday while the B group were doing remote learning. Then we would have a deep cleaning that evening. The B group would come in on a Tuesday hypothetically, and then the A group would be home doing remote learning. We're keeping the same seven-period schedule so students have access to all of their curriculum. It's during this time where a lot's up in the air, we're trying to keep it as consistent as possible. And with smaller class size, and I guess that's really one of the most important points I want to make. We have a great advantage with a school our size. And I went through every single schedule of every class. Our average class size will be nine. So we will be able to have in-person learning with social distancing integrity, following social distancing guidelines. The idea is that the teachers could see the students. And at least kind of track their progress monitors, see them, answer their questions in person. So when they go and do the remote learning, they're better prepared for that experience. Now what we have is a C day where all students do remote learning. And part of that is a recognition. That this is more work for teachers, that they are not only managing in-class and connecting with their students. But they have the additional preparation for remote learning. So Wednesday, students will continue. students will continue to learn, but teachers will be more focused on progress monitoring, catching up, and maybe building some even more quality into their remote learning plans. The Group A will return on Thursday, where the B group will be doing remote learning. And then on Friday, Group B will be in-person, where Group A will be doing remote learning. We will do temperature checks on the bus and before students enter the building, we'll maintain the social distancing, which once again, we have that advantage with small class sizes in a smaller high school. A mask will be required at all times. That's a non-negotiable, and we will enforce it very strictly. And we want to send that message. And we will do significant prep work to let students know, this is not an option. When you wear your hoodie up and we tell you to take it down, okay, that's a protocol. That's trying to set a sense of decorum. This is at a whole other level. You don't have your mask on, you're going home. And we're not going to warn you 10 times, you're going to have to get out, to send a very clear message. Obviously, the CDC guidelines say no gatherings of more than 50. We're going to abide by that. One of the problems could potentially be lunch, but we don't consider that to be a problem because we'll have half the school and half the school will be eating lunch while the other half will be in class still. So we can socially distance in our commons, where we'll have less than 50 students. We'll have the media center. We will have another classroom designated as a lunch area for students to eat. So we can split up, there'll be less than 100 students at any one time and split them in multiple locations. And of course, we'll encourage students, when the weather permits, to go outside and socially distance on the lawn. So we're not as worried about large gatherings because we can space students out. We're already cutting the student body in half. It'll only be a quarter of the student body, which will be less than 100 students in three separate locations. We should be able to maintain the social distancing guidelines. We're going to have to supervise that and send a message about how serious we are, but we should be able to obtain that standard. And of course, regular sanitation and disinfection throughout the day, additional deep cleaning efforts, especially on Mondays and Wednesdays and on Thursdays, asking teachers and students to participate in some of that disinfecting at their class periods. That's the in-person schedule. The remote learning schedule will be a little different, very different than the fall with these major considerations being a step up, in a sense, from even some of the good remote learning that was done in the spring. So we'll have scheduled classes. So students, I think parents have asked for that and students asked for that. A little more consistency and a schedule, so students know when to kind of enter into the classroom and participate. That's going to help to provide more focus, consistency, and more organization. Attendance will be taken, which is different because in the fall, that was not, excuse me, in the spring, that was a component. The other thing that did not really help us with productivity was when, and I'm not even saying it was the wrong move, but when the state announced there was no diminishing of grades, it really took some of the productivity out of the equation. This time, there will be assigned letter and percentage grades for work, and there'll be an expectation that work is completed with support. And there will be weekly minimum and maximum time requirements for the online instruction. We'll continue to use the Google Classroom as a common platform with norms. One thing that we have discussed and that our teachers in a survey have agreed to is an orientation day. If we did go to this model, or when we go to this model, whatever it becomes, is that there would be orientation time to really get students acclimated to better participate in the remote learning process. There will be technological supports and academic supports that Nadine referred to. And then we also have community building, emotional supports. Our teachers have articulated and like to have the clubs continue. Of course, it's going to look different if we go to all remote, but that no matter what happens, our, you know, it's a little easier as students get older to participate in those kind of activities. But that's really so essential to the high school experience. So I feel like we're prepared in either direction to do the best job possible. And I mean, this is going to be a very, you know, important but challenging decision. And we're still, you're all taking in information, but this is the two options we're presenting at this time. And Gary, I think that was five minutes. I wasn't timing. I know you must have some questions, so.
Do you anticipate PLC still being functioning in a way like it has in the past on Wednesdays? Where there'll be time for that?
Well.
Or not, you haven't really worked that in yet?
Oh, no. We're always a PLC. Wednesday is the formal meeting time, but we're always PLC. So we're always collaborating. We're always looking at student performance information. We're always acting on it and having to drive our instruction. So absolutely, you know, we weren't named the best in the nation on accident. That's not something that I ask the people to do. I think that's something that they believe in heart and soul. So yes, it will be adapted and look a little different and revised, but they absolutely will continue to be collaborative, to use student performance information to drive instruction and to improve their own instruction, our teachers. And they're the best at that, and they're not going to stop doing it, though it might look different.
I don't have a specific question for you. I do like both of these presentations here. I really hope that we can, you know, do the in-person learning. I think high school students getting that full day, regular day, I definitely like that plan. But most importantly, I want to say to all the administrators, you know, thank you. You have obviously addressed the concerns of all of the age groups of the buildings that you're dealing with in probably the most professional manner. I mean, I like all these choices that have been given here. And obviously, we're set to go in a direction depending upon what somebody else tells us to do. So I just, I want to thank you for all the, all the time and hard work you've put into it. There's definitely good, good thought planning going on here. So.
And Jack, I promised I would ask, so I'm going to ask, what has the climate of teachers been from the high school in regards to returning in the fall?
We don't have a separate high school survey. The initial survey that I saw from the WTA, there was a slight, a slightly higher number. It was very slight, I think 39 to 35, if you will, of teachers in the district who said they wanted to, would be more interested in in-person than just all remote. But that's really close. The survey, I think, I don't want to steal the thunder, but the other survey that I saw was more 55, 45 that people would prefer starting with remote learning. The vibe I'm getting from our teachers, because we haven't given a high school only survey.
And that's more what I'm looking for.
Yes. I think for different reasons, and I think our staff is amazing. I think everybody knows I believe that, and I think they are. I think they're a little more cautious at this time. They've expressed that in the committee. They, I think they have some concerns they still want to see addressed. But the honest answer to your question is, if, there's probably not a vast majority, but a little more majority who thinks we should be more cautious at this time and go to all remote learning. But everybody wants to be in school. There's no question about that. They're all dedicated. And that's, and I think if we do go to all remote learning, they're going to put their heart and souls into it, like to do everything. But if I were sincere, especially in the last week or so, I think the, how should I say, enthusiasm about coming back has waned a little bit based on the new data we're getting. So, but it's, it's pretty close. But to be sincere, I think there's a little, a few more people who would prefer starting in all remote.
Okay.
And I understand that. And there are some legitimate safety concerns, I think, that we have to all address.
Yep.
I do, I agree with what Joel said earlier, just, I think it's, especially for the freshmen, to have some kind of an orientation period and to get kids really to connect, because it's the first time you're meeting, and that's the bread and butter of this district, are the relationships between teachers and students. So I hope we can address the safety concerns to a point where people are more open about coming back and starting in-person. But part of it is, we'll see what happens in our region too. Does that give you?
Yeah, no, that's, that's great. I appreciate your openness and honesty about it. It's a, it's a tough situation. And, you know, I guess one of the things that we're always concerned about is making sure everybody's voice is represented. And so the one other thing I wanted to ask you is, especially at the high school level, have we considered or have you already talked to some students within this context? And is there a process for doing that that might be, you know, beneficial for what the students themselves would prefer? I mean, I know, I know, obviously, there's decisions that have to be made, but, but, you know, their voice being heard in this process would be interesting as well.
Yes. So I have talked to many students, every opportunity I've had, informally and in passing and through emails and texts and through when I've seen them at our senior gathering last week and at a recital I attended where there were a good number of students and just when I bumped into them in the community on occasion.
Yep.
Of course, like our community, there's not one mindset here.
Right.
I think the most, if I could summarize, our students really love coming to school. I mean, most of them, not everyone, but I think they really do miss the connection. They were surprised at how much they did. They really valued it. I think, you know, they're teenagers, so they have a different perspective. The feedback they gave us about the learning was that there's no substitute for having some in-person contact.
Right.
They really think there's great value in the in-person.
Right.
So that was the majority opinion of the students that I've talked to want to be in school at some level. Yes. I'm not going to say that's unanimous, though, but.
No, I just, I think it's interesting. I mean, I know we've formally, you know, we've asked the question of teachers and we've asked the question of parents. And I think we're doing some other follow-up with parents and especially at the high school level. I think even if it's anecdotal, I appreciate you sharing that so that we understand more where our students are coming from.
As much as I love them though, you know, I don't want to just generalize, but they're teenagers, right?
Right.
So they're not as afraid.
No fear.
Yeah. It's good, and that's also not so good, so.
Yep. Understood. Thank you.
Any word on high school fall athletics?
Ms. Kevin comes up. We are having some practices currently, and we're following the CDC guidelines, but.
Yeah. So as far as athletics, and I'll continue my portion of the presentation and kind of wrap things up. But as John pointed out, you've got two different athletic bodies, governing bodies. At the, at the elementary level, it's the Illinois Elementary Athletic Association. They determined no contact sports that would allow a fall state series. Basically, they defined every sport as a contact sport except golf. So the only, the only sport they are going to recognize a state champion in is golf. So then the Athletic Conference then decided, well, if the governing body is saying these other sports aren't safe enough to have a state series, then maybe we shouldn't be. And so that's why the decision to cancel the fall sports. They haven't made a decision on winter or spring. The IHS-A, they started going down their path of releasing guidance for athletics. And I can't, are we in phase three or four with IHS-A, Jack? You remember? Or phase two? Phase three? I heard somebody say. So phase three. And then they were saying, we're going to be rolling out phase four. And then they rolled it out, and then the Department of Public Health and the State Board of Ed stepped in and said, whoa, wait a second, guys. You, this isn't safe what you're proposing. So they backed off and they said, we're not going to issue any more guidance. Guidance will come from the State Board of Ed and the Department of Public Health. So right now, basically, what schools are able to do is primarily conditioning drills, that type of stuff, no contact. If you're inside, you have to wear masks. So it's in limbo right now, athletics. And so we haven't gotten any official word yet, what we're going to be able to do or what it's going to look like in the fall.
But we can play golf.
We might be able to, if they follow suit, if they follow suit. Let me see if I can find my presentation. Oh, that's not me.
It's minimized, Kevin. Go down to the files.
While he's looking for that, I've got another question, and it's more directed at Jack and John and Amy. So just to be clear, your options are either some form of combo, hybrid, in-person, remote, or full-on remote. Is there an option in the junior high and high school, like the elementary presented, where there would be in-person, but then also a virtual, if, if parents just frankly aren't comfortable sending their kids to school in-person, is there an option for that, even if in-person is the direction we go? Or is, or is it just homeschool?
Sure.
So, want to make sure you got the light?
Give me a thumbs up, Jeremy.
So, so for us, we, we are looking at that hybrid, at that blended model, which is going to definitely have that remote on Wednesdays and then that, or remote for an hour and I think it's 40 minutes.
Right.
Maybe, maybe I'm off a little bit on that. So there's that. But then we're also, and we're, we're working with the leadership, we're working with the teachers, you know, there's, there's a lot of, a lot of players involved. But we understand that there are certain parents that may not be too keen about our blended model, even if we decide as a district and as a school to go that route. And so making a remote only, that, you know, no in-person, I believe that that's the direction that we were planning on going. And so that's going to take different aspects, but we don't know what that looks like yet.
But that would be an option.
Well, we would.
Even if we go in-person.
Correct.
It's what you're working towards.
Correct. That, I mean, that's, we have enough individuals out there that we, I believe, our, our last parent survey, this is the updated one, said 10%, we're not going to be sending their students back. Now, that was before they started seeing what the plans are and all of that. So that may have changed. I don't know what it, might even change if we got updated information tomorrow. But, but we need to give them an option. It's not going to be homeschool or blended model. We want to make sure there's something else out there.
Okay. Just making sure. And same.
Yeah, there'll be remote opportunity, but I've got to be real about it. It's going to be a little diminished.
Right.
I mean, it's not going to be the same, but.
Right. Got it. Okay. Thank you.
So, you know, in terms of kind of decision-making, where we go from here in the process and, and I'll highlight some of the other questions that were, were asked. Honestly, a week ago, I was pretty confident what I would be sharing with the board as to what direction we'd be headed. Like a lot of things, you know, as soon as it seems like you're on solid ground, a piece of information comes along and things begin to shift. And so definitely, we're not in a position to make a recommendation either direction, but we're still in that fact gathering mode. And there are some next steps for parent input, staff input, and then definitely, we've got to work through some of the concerns that our staff have. The parent survey that we did back in July, just, I just highlight a couple of things because I think this also illustrates some of the, you know, divergence thinking that, that we're working with. And it's broken down by grade levels, but at the same time, it's not pure, like this isn't just South parents, because they also have students in other buildings. But kind of gives you a feel. But when we did the original survey, we had roughly about 55% were saying that, yes, they're sending their child, 9.6, not sending their child, and 34% unsure. We are going to be, now that we've shared this information with our families, we are going to be doing another survey. The unsure will not be an option. So that, that 34%, they're going to have to say, yeah, I'm comfortable sending, or I'm more comfortable with remote learning. But they're going to have to weigh in on that. So, and, and we'll see where the percentages go. The other question, though, I think is of interest, we asked the parents, what's your biggest concern about returning to school in the fall? And this is the youngest groups. Number one, the exposure to COVID-19. You know, that's, that's their number one concern. When we look at the K5, again, their percents, they're about 62% yes, that 8.6% no, and then again, 29%, 28.8% that are unsure. So again, we'll have to see as a result of what was shared today, does that percent, do those shift? But again, when you ask that question, what are you most concerned about? That's the exposure to COVID-19. When we get to the junior high, similar percentages, you know, about 58% is a yes, and you got 34% unsure. Now, Now, based upon what, again, we'll see what happens to that percentage. And again, maybe not as significant compared to the quality of remote learning, but still, the over, you know, what they're concerned about most is the exposure to COVID-19. And then our high school, the colors, it shifts a little bit, but it's still 60% yes, 33% unsure. And then here, it's almost the quality of remote learning, exposure to COVID. Now it's almost, you know, dead even with that. And I think that's, that's what the challenge is for us. We, we understand that the best environment is in-person learning. We, we understand, everybody believes that. But at the same time, there's the risk of the exposure to COVID-19. And I think it was Jack, last week when we were discussing it as an admin team, he, he said, you know, is the risk worth, worth the reward? You know, so if you go down the road of in-person learning, but then, you know, you have the staff member become ill or student become ill, you know, has it been, is the risk worth, worth the reward? The other piece to it is, and then this is our, our staff. This is a survey we sent out to the staff. And the question was, what do you believe is the better option for the start of the school year? All remote at this time, in-person, and then the, what's significant safety protocol is in place is the continuation. And you can see that, and this was sent out Friday. I asked for them to respond by Monday. And had about 117 responses and we have a lower 200 employees, I think. So, you know, we're running about 55%, think remote's the way to go, and 44%. Some of that, I think, is, you know, maybe unsure about what remote's going to look like. Because even though we had a lot of our staff members involved in the planning, not all of them were involved in the planning. And so some of them are getting the information now, as our community is and as the board is. So that number may shift. Some of them are concerned, you know, when you think about, you know, even like the busing situation, it's kind of interesting. When the guidance first came out and they talked about six feet social distancing, we were already doing the math and a lot of districts were. And we came up with 12, 12 kids on a bus. You know, in order to get six, you know, when you think about them double-loaded, six feet, we're thinking 12. And then when the ISBE guidance comes out, it's 50. And that's because I, you know, the challenge is, how do you get all your kids to school if you only can have 12 on a bus at a time? And so logistically, bus companies can't purchase enough buses. They're not going to get the drivers. And so I think some of that drove the 50, but now, you know, and rightly so, some of our teachers are calling out, hey, you know, 50 kids on a bus and we're talking about social distancing in the 15 minutes? And, and then it's just like, you start thinking about, you know, being a bus driver is a very difficult job because you're at the front of the bus, you got one mirror, and you've got, you know, 30, 40, 50, 60 students behind you. And now, in addition to making sure that they remain seated and, you know, they're keeping their hands to themselves, they got to have their mask on. And they got to keep their mask on for the entire bus ride. And, and so it's, it's those things that you really, really start to play on. You know, how much can we assure that it's going to be a safe environment, you know, for our students and for our staff? And so those are some of the, some of the things we're wrestling with and we're working through. And we do have to work through some things with our bargaining units. You know, those, the questions that are being posed in public comment are some of the questions that our staff are posing as well. You know, if I get asked to be quarantined, what happens? Is that, do I have to use sick time? Is that not sick time? And so those are things, and I think we can reach agreements on those, you know, through moments of understanding, but those are some of the things that we, we have to work on.
Kevin, can I interrupt for one second?
Sure.
On the, the staff survey, you said, you know, you feel like maybe now that they've seen the plans, that they might feel a little bit, you know, better. Are we gonna, we're resurveying parents. Are we going to resurvey staff?
Yeah, we'll resurvey staff. What I really want, Jack referenced the fact that the WTA did one survey and then our admin team, basically because, as I, when I told you that literally, you know, in the last week, you know, Jack had one of his subcommittee meetings. And the, from the staff, there was concern about in-person and they were really starting to question the in-person. Lindsay, you know, had some meetings and you start looking at, and granted, if they do the half-day, this is an issue. But you start thinking about, if you're feeding students in their classrooms, they got to take their mask down. And it's like all these different dynamics that we're trying to resolve. And so that's when we decided we needed to do a survey of our staff and see where are they really at.
Yeah.
And at the same time, the WTA was doing their own survey. And our, our data was similar, you know. But yeah, so the plan would be, yeah, we need to, because honestly, you got to have your staff, you know, buy in and be comfortable.
Absolutely.
You know, so, so definitely. So what we're going to do, Nadine and I, Nadine's doing right now the heavy lifting and tomorrow we're going to collaborate on. But, you know, obviously, we've got these different presentations. We want to pull it together into a document has a little bit more detail that's available to our school community. So that if they need to review it, if there's something they missed, they'll be able to look at that, that information. We do want to do another parent survey and see where their comfort level is on returning in-person. We're going to be doing virtual, I guess, town hall me, town hall meetings in order for, again, for us to kind of highlight what our plans are and then get some dialogue back and forth with parents and answer those. And then, again, you're still kind of waiting on if the ISBE or DuPage County Public Health. The other thing that was a little unsettling last week, although it, it ended up being nothing. But I was sharing with the admin team, the regional superintendent last Thursday about 7:00 at night, sent out an email, hey, there's rumors about the governor making an announcement on Friday, nothing to it. 9:00 at night, she sends out another email, pay attention Friday. Looks like something's coming. And so then you're, you know, people are starting to talk. Is he going to say schools can't resume until Labor Day? Is he going to say no in-person? What's, what's going to happen? And then Friday about 10:00, the Illinois Associated School Administrators, representatives sent out, we've been assured no big announcement coming from the governor today. And then the state superintendent sent out her communication saying, oh, those are rumors, it's not going to happen. I was on a Zoom meeting that afternoon and another superintendent said, you know, and I mentioned this to, I know the board last night, but for the community. Well, the superintendent said, you know how, you know, a pro team puts out there, hey, we have complete confidence in our coach or our manager? And then two weeks later, the manager or the coach is gone. And so it's kind of like, you know, is, are we just waiting for something to come down? That's going to do, tell us what that, what we need to do. We're going to continue to work with our employees on their concerns and try to resolve a lot of those things. In terms of the, the cleaning protocols, each of the custodians is going to have a punch list and a schedule of where they need to be, what needs to be cleaned, when it needs to be cleaned. And they'll be held accountable for that. The reason why we got the sprayers is because they'll be able to sanitize an entire room very quickly. So, and, and restrooms, so that after a restroom break, they can go in there, the entire restroom can be sanitized before that next group has to come in. We've got enough cleaning products. Here, here's the interesting thing, masks right now are easy to get. We can get those no problem. We've got cleaning products on order. We've got enough cleaning products that if we weren't to get anything in, which obviously we're hoping that's not the case, we can get through November. Currently where we're at, sanitizing our buildings the way they need to be cleaned.
We actually, and again, our information changes, so actually maybe until like the end of December.
Okay. So at the end of December, we can keep our buildings sanitized. Gloves are in pretty good shape, but gloves are the hardest thing to get right now. You know, so we're in pretty, pretty good shape with, with those types of things. The in-person learning will be different and I, I can't stress that enough. You know, some, I think some parents want their child to get back to school and see with their friends and do all those things. It's not going to be like school was. I mean, it's, kids are socially distanced. They're not going to be able to have those normal interactions. Recession won't be on the playground, on the equipment, you know, PE won't be the same. The the, the ability, and this is really unfortunate, we, we have worked so hard in our district to shift our teaching practice from teacher-centered to student-centered and allow for small group learning and, you know, problem-based, project-based. Well, it's not that you can't do like group learning with each other, but now it's going to be with their device. You know, it's not going to be getting together in a small group, you know, and, and having small breakout sessions like that. So the, the day is going to be very different for our students, you know. And so I think that's what parents need to understand, you know. And then one, one thing, though, that regardless if we start the year on remote or in-person, as I mentioned earlier, we, we have some flexibility with our, our, our calendar. In addition to our normal institute days and SIP days, the Board of Ed gave us five extra planning days. And November 3rd right now is an institute day for our district because it's an election day and they use our junior high as a polling place. And so you try not to have students in the building. Well, after school calendars were approved and submitted to the ROE and the Illinois State Board of Ed, they passed legislation making November 3rd a holiday. So we no longer need to use that as a, as an institute day. So originally, our school day was going to be August 17th and 18th as institute days. August 19th would be the first day with the students. What we're recommending is August 17th, 18th, and 19th are institute days, so we'd move that on November 3rd to the beginning of the year. And then use two of our planning days, that Thursday and Friday. Because if we're starting with in-person, again, some of our teachers have been more enmeshed in the planning and have a real understanding of what the day's going to look like and how it's going to work. Some of our teachers don't have that same level of understanding. And so that five days allows us to plan and really get ready for when the students come. If we're involved in remote learning, that's additional time for staff development and getting our staff ready for what remote learning is going to look like and what the expectations are going to be. If we start with remote learning, one of the schools of thought, and Joe, you brought this up, is bringing students in in small groups for a couple of days to meet their teacher, to start hopefully developing somewhat a relationship and some, and again, reviewing expectations. Because even though in March, you know, flipping on a dime to remote learning wasn't maybe the, the best way to do it, we had three quarters of the year that the student had in-person learning and knowing their teacher and getting to know their teacher. So that's definitely going to be lacking. And so that's what we would try to work on is having that. The other piece, too, is if we go with remote learning, I would like to see us bring in small groups of students periodically, especially students who need additional support. Our ELL students, students, IP, some of our other at-risk students. Getting them in periodically because that's one of the things that we learned through the spring is that, you know, sometimes students do need that in-person guidance and support. And so that would be also part of our, our plan. In terms of timeline, obviously, we know parents need to know. The board wants to know. And so the, again, we're going to get this out, if not tomorrow, Thursday. Get this out in a, in a package for parents to look at. Get the survey out to parents and then set up those virtual meetings. We're going to have to have some additional meetings with our union leadership to work through some things. But if we can, we have a board meeting our, August 4th. And if we can have that as our kind of, you know, all right, we want to give the board our recommendation, that's our, our timeline.
So I guess I just want to be clear on something. Are we officially moving the start of the student year regardless of how we start to the 24th?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure that was clear to the parents out there.
Yes, yes. And so I'll be bringing an amended calendar to the board.
Okay.
So.
So Kevin, is it sort of the point of view of the, the district that if a decision is made to go remote, that will apply to all of the schools? Or is there a potential that some of the schools would opt for in-person and others could opt to go remote? Is it too, hard to even predict that at this point?
It's hard to predict. I know, I know EC is really pushing for, for in-person. I know they are. And I know, I, I've, I've heard through the grapevine that even kindergarten is thinking if there's a way to do some in-person with kindergarten. So those are some of the logistics. I would think, though, that the vast majority would be, would be remote.
It would be one way or another.
Right.
For the district.
Right, right, for the district, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I think you and all of the administration did a really great job of laying out the plans for tonight. It's clear, everybody's not only education and intellect and, and experience has gone into this, but also your, your passion and your heart. And so I appreciate that. I think the community appreciates knowing how challenging this is for everybody. It's just, it's not, it's not easy and there's no right decisions. And so, you know, thank you for all of the hard work.
All right.
All right.
Thank you, everyone. I know that's been a lot of work and really appreciate the, the detailed information. Okay. I guess we will continue with our agenda and it is superintendent's report.
So included in my report is, again, we're going to be opening up registration, but we don't have the exact date that we're opening it. Because part of it is with, we're, we're going to set it up as if we're opening up in-person. And so in Skyward, there's some changes that have to be done with with relation to assigning students to buildings. And so they're working on that. The original deadline was going to be July 31st to complete registration. We're probably going to extend that a little bit. So we'll be getting that date out to parents so that they have that. And then the other thing that's, I include in your folder is, and not that you have to look at this tonight or anything, but typically, there's a, the calendar for the board that kind of gives you an idea. And I gave you last year's version and this year's version only because there are a couple of things that I lined out. And if the board wants to, to include them, for instance, like summer school report, I don't think that's really worth doing this year. And then the PLC update, or dual-language, no, dual-language update would stay. the PLC update, or dual-language, no, dual-language update would say, the PLC update, whether or not, that was something that we thought that we still needed, but that's something that the, the board can look at. And one other quick update, I did get an email right before the board meeting, the tri-conference in the fall, November, has been canceled.
Yeah.
So, so we don't have to worry about that. And that's my report.
Okay, very good. Uh, any board reports?
I just want to wish a happy early birthday to our president. It's tomorrow.
Thank you, Gary.
Happy birthday, Joel.
Appreciate that.
Do you want to have a meeting to celebrate?
Yeah.
That would be an excellent idea. I would really enjoy that. Okay. Public comments?
Is there anything I don't?
Let me see if we, yeah. We did get one. Yeah, we got one. I have the following comment for the meeting's meeting. "I appreciate all the hard work done by the principals, teacher, and staff during this time. Currently, there are a few details about specifics of the upcoming year. Once we know more, will parents and their families be given the option to decide what's best for their child as relates to choosing between in-person learning, a hybrid model, or remote?" And yes. That's it.
All right. Future meetings and events, I have a special board meeting we're going to be scheduling for next Wednes- Wednesday, 29th. And that will be for the board to further consider candidates to fill vacancies. And our regular board meeting in August is on the 4th at 6:00 PM. I'm guessing it probably will be here, but it's possible things might move to the village hall at some point.
Right.
So we'll put that in the announcement that comes out.
Although after Jason did all this work.
Yeah.
Right?
Jeremy.
Jeremy, sorry, Jeremy.
Way to go, Jeremy.
All right, very good. Then we will move to closed session.
That was my roll call, too.
Chair will entertain a motion to enter closed session to inter- well, to discuss collective bargaining, personnel issues, board candidates, and the superintendent's evaluation.
So moved.
Second.
I'm borrowing this from, thanks. Uh, Mr. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Armstrong?
Yes.
All right.